Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 16, 2014. This is the Board of County Commissioners, Picken County, Colorado, Work Session, and we're going into our first Agenda Item after a short executive session with the review of the Master Planning Update, and John Peacock will kind of take lead on this.
Yeah, thanks, Rob, and I'm just going to introduce this topic for the Board and for the public. This has actually been an ongoing effort really since 2006 for the county. 2006, the county completed a comprehensive facilities master plan, and that plan looked at what, at that time, we projected future growth to be, future needs to be, and planned out facilities to meet those needs. But the world changed a little bit in 2009, and we had the Great Recession, and in 2006, the planning effort had identified anywhere, it had identified alternatives between $119 and $151 million in facilities projects to anticipate what seemed to be what would be rapid growth to accommodate just us keeping up with what was happening in our community. Since 2009, really, our world's changed, and we needed to reevaluate really what our growth projections were and what could feasibly be done to accommodate our facility's needs. And so, we entered into really a couple phases. One, we started looking at the downtown facilities, and the first building we really started looking at was this building, and saying, "Well, could we squeeze some more efficiency out of this building?" By efficiency, I mean more efficient use of space so that we could accommodate more of our current needs more effectively, as well as upgrading just the mechanics and systems in the building to be more efficient from an environmental perspective. Simple things like adding insulation help, you know, we have uninsulated walls and such. And we did that study in 2012, and we did identify, yeah, there are opportunities for us to use this space more efficiently, and we could accommodate our current needs and some future needs. But we could not accommodate everything that was both in our downtown core, and, as we subsequently learned, we were far more pinched in our public safety spaces than we thought. And so, we came back to the Board, and we said, "Well, the City of Aspen is doing a facilities master planning process, and they've hired R&amp;L, who did our initial master planning effort back in 2006. We would like to jump onto that contract and partner with the city just to look at our whole downtown campus, update our needs assessment, and update what opportunities we have to meet our facility's needs as an organization," either in partnership or not, but really to take another look. And so, we are actually in that process now, and so, what we wanted to do today was update you on where that, what that R&amp;L study has told us to date. It's not complete, we're not done with it, but we do have some indications about what it's telling us in terms of our future needs, what kinds of opportunities we think we have to address those needs, and just to get some feedback from the Board as we go into budget planning. So, today, we have Dave Detwiler with us, who's going to run through the presentation and really talk about what's been happening with R&amp;L. We've also asked Joe DeSalvo to join us to actually really put some context to these numbers. Oftentimes, it's really difficult to say, "Well, you know, because what staff is going to be telling you is, 'Well, national standards tell us we need this much square footage for these functions. We've adjusted that by this percentage down to this, and this is how much square footage we need.'" But we wanted you to also have some context about, so what does that really mean in terms of delivering services, or the types of challenges that our departments are facing? Public safety, as you're going to see, is obviously a major, major area of concern for us in terms of facility improvements. I think every department has similar kind of service delivery concerns and needs. We haven't invited everyone to kind of tell these stories today. I think we'll have opportunities for that as we try and move forward in our planning efforts, but today, we really wanted to tell you, what have we learned about our space needs today since the Great Recession? What are our opportunities to address them? And what do we think it's going to mean from a service perspective? So, with that, I'll hand it over to Dave, and there are no big decision points. We're just looking to update you and get feedback from Dave today.
Good morning. Dave Detwiler from Facilities. Feel free to jump in at any point and ask a question before I move on. There's no, you won't get me out of rhythm by any means. Well, that's micro print, isn't it? That's kind of tough. I think you all have this in your package, so I apologize for the small type, but we wanted to just, again, re-identify some of the problems. We'll talk about the old courthouse first. As we know and experienced recently in the big trial we just had, or almost had, we can't adequately hold all of the functions and staff in the courthouse right now. They are all underspaced. We've got a security issue, a public and staff justice system functions all intermingling, and that's not a good thing to happen. Joe will probably talk about that a little bit when we get there. And we've always kind of had the discussion that, "Well, once the APD moves out in 2018, we'll just flex out into that space, and that'll take care of us." But what we've learned in the R&amp;L study and further conversations is that really isn't the case. That space won't be adequate to meet our needs even in the short term once they move out, so we'll talk later about what we can do about that. The other, I won't call it a problem, it's really, again, a challenge. The old courthouse has historic designations, both inside and outside, and so, that kind of limits what you can and can't do in that building, which is, again, a good thing, but it does create some issues when you're trying to get folks in there. This building, I think you guys are fairly up to speed with some of the issues here, but I'll reiterate them. Really inefficient layout, the way we've got this cut up in the suites and this floor plate, isn't ideal in terms of its dimensions to really be efficient. The HVAC systems and boilers and whatnot are all at the end of their useful life, and even a little bit past that, and short of doing a bigger project, we would be looking at some substantial dollars to replace those systems, just as is. We have very little insulation in this building. It's really inefficient to run, and we all know that operating costs are something that we want to try to control at every point. And then, we've had recently where the BIDs Department, see, I'm using the new lingo, has had to move into that old housing space, and we've got to get community development back into the core here once APD moves out. So, we've got space issues that we need to accommodate. Again, apologize for tremendous micro print, but this is not, these issues are not new. As John said, back in the 2005, 2006 R&amp;L study, we went through a public input process where they brought together a caucus and board and a bunch of public meetings to talk about what these issues are. And if you read through this list, it really just reiterates what I just said. These are problems that we've had for quite some time, and we didn't address them in 2005, and it's getting to the point of critical mass where they really need to be addressed. So, maybe this is a good point for Joe to talk a little bit about what these issues are in terms of a real picture before we get into what square feet numbers and whatnot.
Thanks, guys, for having me. I think I'm going to take up a chunk of your time today, but I want to do that just because there's a lot to talk about, and I want you to be fully informed as to what's going on, at least in my world, in the last, especially in the last year, six months. In 1890, the cornerstone was placed on the Picken County courthouse, and I started working there in 1985, and virtually, not one thing in that building has changed since my career started, except that we continue to grow in both the Aspen Police Department and Picken County Sheriff's Office, and our needs have changed significantly since then. So, the facility we're in, obviously, is no longer conducive to the kind of product we put out. As I said, it was overcrowded and unsecure back then, and nothing's changed. Courthouse and courtroom security standards have changed tremendously in the last 10 years. We've seen, unfortunately, some courthouse and courtroom violence throughout the country, and as I've always said to you before, I like to think I'm not a Chicken Little, so please don't take anything I'm saying as being threatening. But we really do have an insecure courthouse that could lead to some problems for all of us in the future. Right now, the way my office operates, and one of the things that irritates me the most about our current space is that, and this is not a new problem, it's been going on for years, that we have to co-mingle in a single hallway victims of domestic violence that are crying, upset, telling their story to Aspen Police Officers and Picken County Sheriff's Office while they sit next to somebody who might be in our building to get something as routine as a VIN inspection. Next to them may be a probationer who's already been convicted of crime of domestic violence or something else. And sometimes, they're even mingled in with inmates who are walking by there in the hallway. This is hardly a conducive situation to give a person who's been victimized of a crime their dignity and respect that they deserve. And that situation's been going on in that hallway for a very long time. We do have, every community has got the exposure to have a high-profile incident happen. However, with the nature of our community, I think we've done a real good job of increasing our odds that that could happen here. This weekend, we are looking at some incredible dignitaries, world leaders that will be here, and that creates some issues for us when we have to assist other agencies protecting them. And if something were to go haywire in their visits, their fallback plan is our courthouse, which, as I said, is not really the place to do the kind of operations we're talking about. This year, we had a very unfortunate homicide that we were all well aware of. We were doing our best to do a 21st century investigation in a 19th century courthouse. If any of you came up during that week, what you would have seen was a Jody and her crew, John Peacock, I believe, had made a makeshift hallway segregated area that was made up of office chairs and crime scene tape to keep people out of the area. That not only affected us in our investigation, but it was real impact on the assessor and the treasurer's office because we were limiting access for citizens to come pay their taxes or to be at the treasurer's office. So, that was a, when I saw that, I was frankly a little embarrassed that that's how we needed to segregate people. One of the downsides as well is one of our suspects who arrested these in this case, and eventually turned out to be the only person in jail, had quite a conversation with somebody who works in the assessor's office, not even knowing this person was a suspect in this crime. Unacceptable, not only at an employee level, but at an investigative level. I cannot have suspects talking to county employees about things that they may or may not be fully informed on. So, between that combination of seeing what our best face could look at in a first-degree homicide investigation, and the co-mingling of suspects, employees, and citizens, really put my tolerance for this at a pretty low level, and it made me really think that we need to do something about this facility. The fact that we pulled it off, I'm going to say the credit to the people that work with me and with the Aspen Police Department, with the District Attorney's Office, we made do. And we have a five-star community, and I'm embarrassed to say, a two-star facility that we're doing our best to do our work in. It's quite important and very serious work, as you guys know. One of the other things that we faced was evidence storage. Evidence now, in the days of DNA, hypercritical defense attorneys, evidence has to be stored in a completely different way than it ever was when I started. We were perfectly fine putting it in a big locker in the courthouse. Now, we're looking at climate-controlled, alarmed, video systems. All that has changed dramatically in the past 20 years. You know, I don't know if that was an O.J. byproduct, but it might have been. A lot of things that I do in my career changed incredibly after O.J. Simpson, especially when it comes to the preservation and collection of evidence. Moving away from our criminal activity, we're also, as we know, as a community, exposed to natural disasters that threaten us all the time, whether it's wildfire, floods, these mountain rescue, these are all things that are under my jurisdiction. And currently, unfortunately, our best facilities to manage these incidents don't belong to us. We would work out of a mountain rescue building. It doesn't belong to Picken County. An Aspen fire facility doesn't belong to us, or even the Airport Operations Center doesn't belong to us. This limits our ability to have a functional EOC, Emergency Operations Center, fully functional Incident Command Post, or even a place to have large press conferences, as I said. When you look at the floods and fire that occurred in Boulder, they were inundated with press, and I think part of my responsibility is to get accurate information out there, and the press is a conduit for that. We do have the ability to use the mountain rescue building, as I said, it's not ours, and that's unpredictable. I believe the last county facility we booked, built, was the County Shop, and that was 25-plus years ago. I really don't know how the Picken County Sheriff's Office and public safety got so neglected, but it did, and we need that to change desperately. I do agree with Dave. I think we, right now, are at critical mass. Our evidence storage is maxed out. I don't know when we're going to alleviate that issue, but this is a real need, and I want you all to know that I plan on being responsible with this project. I'm not looking to build a monument to government. I'm looking to build a facility that we could use. As I said, I'm proud of the people I work with that did such a high-quality job with low-quality facilities, and this morning, we were in our leadership team meeting, and we were talking about generations. In 1890, I don't know how long they expected that building to last, but it is built. It just is too small for us, and I believe firmly that our next generation needs a better facility, and whoever the next sheriff is, I feel a responsibility not to leave him with the current situation. So, that's pretty much my thumbnail sketch of where I am, how we got here, and I'm here to answer you any questions you guys have.
Rachel.
Thanks, Joey, for that. Appreciate it. And maybe something later in the presentation, but where are we at for the adequacy and future needs of the jail facility itself, which you also posed?
Jail, our last update was three or four years ago. We did cameras, we did locks, we did doors. So, as far as that goes, that's pretty static. I think that's okay. Our daily count is reasonably low. I don't see immediate need in the next 10 years that we need to do anything with the jail.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And Rachel, I'd just add that we have some additional functions currently in the jail space. For example, dispatch and some of the basement spaces that-
That could move out and create-
If they were accommodated another way, I think we can extend the life, I think we feel comfortable that we could extend the life of the existing facility within our planning process.
And I would just add that I know that the jail administrator is looking for some administrative space because they're functioning on the back half of the booking area. So, I know that he's been kind of trying to figure out how do they keep craning people into that little bitty area for administrative functions.
Okay.
So, Joey, as we know that the Aspen Police Department is looking to move out in a couple of years, talk to us or to me about the pros and cons about a joint justice center.
A joint justice center, George? I guess I could only compare it to what we have right now. I do think that our relationship with the Aspen Police Department and the collaboration that we get is invaluable. I like having Aspen Police officers there who can exchange information as simple as, you know, we're looking for the same person or maybe investigating the same case. So, I do think that is an invaluable asset that we could have for both of us. Whether or not that's feasible to have a coexisting facility, I think is going to be up to you guys.
And we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail about what we've learned to date on that topic.
Steve?
Joe, somewhere along the line, I got this vision of needing a tunnel to lead from the jail to the courthouse so you could move a prisoner securely into the courtroom without having to have them go outside and then back inside. Is that an accurate thing of what would be the ideal situation?
I think that would be a dream if we could. One of the most secure things we could do, I don't know if you've ever seen us walk inmates from the jail to the courthouse. Once again, our most high-profile people, they are exposed when we do that. Ultimately, if I had to paint this any way I would want, I would have a courtroom, sheriff's office, all connected to the jail. Those inmates never have to be outside and expose themselves. Or we could just ship them in an elevator up to court. Much similar, Garfield County has that situation exactly, if so does Eagle County.
I was over at the Eagle County's new buildings not too long ago, and, you know, they moved everything into all new facilities. I'd love to see some of their plans and stuff like that as we move forward on this, because it's nice to have that comparison.
Yeah, we've actually used in developing some of this, the new Grand Junction Public Safety Building as kind of a model to at least dialogue up or down from.
They have the benefit of having excess land nearby, which, you know, us, we're kind of putting a square peg into a round hole in some places here.
Yeah, we'll make it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be talking about that a little bit in the presentation.
Rachel?
Yeah, you know, just before we move off court sheriff in this sort of philosophical conversation, you know, I go to the CCI conferences and the Nashville conferences, and there's always a vendor's hall, and, you know, there's a lot of police and sheriff equipment, things like that, people selling services. One of the services they sell is a video screen so that people can appear by video in court for more of the simple arraignments or hearings or things like that. And, you know, I don't know if that biases the court against the person or not. Here they are on a screen. It doesn't seem to be the scale of a community like ours. It seems like something that happens in really super-large communities. And, you know, I have to go back to, you know, people in our facility are innocent until proven guilty, and, you know, when you end up with the orange jumpsuit pictures from walking through the outdoors, you know, that leaves a lingering sense with folks that they're guilty, no matter what, even if they're found innocent. And, you know, I think that at a human level, there's an obligation to try to make these things right and to grow it into the future the way it should be. And, you know, I don't, nobody likes to spend money on big, quote, government facilities. It's just too easy to say it's a Taj Mahal or blah, blah. But, you know, when I first moved to town in 1978, there was only one traffic light. I used to brag in the whole county. I think it was on Main Street, it was the Turo. And that, you know, I live somewhere, there's one traffic light, and then I watched them start to go up in Basal, Aspen Village, and Airport Business Center, and everywhere along the way, and that's because the town has grown, and it's a matter of safety. It's a matter of safety on the roads. And there was an outburst when we put in the traffic light right here on the corner, that it was going to mess up traffic so much, and yet, we were able to look at it and say, "We have 600 people a day crossing that crosswalk. They've got, we've got to have a traffic light." And so, I see this as very similar to that, even though it's on a much bigger scale, you know. We just, you can't keep pretending that we can adequately serve with the same facilities we had when there was one traffic light in Picken County.
Rachel, you brought up two great points. Yes, we do have the ability to video conference. However, defense attorneys, and I agree, you're right, these people are pre-trial.
Yeah.
They are not convicted of anything, and defense attorneys and clients want to be in front of a judge. That intimacy disappears through a TV set.
That's what the court is about, in a federal system.
And so, if it's okay with the Board to move on, what we have next in the presentation is talking about what we've learned through the R&amp;L study about kind of our square footage shortages and opportunities. Both from, we both use national standards, but then we also, because we're terminally unique here in Picken County, we established our own standards, which are lower than that, that we'll talk to you about, so.
And that is a good thing to say, that there was a really strong willingness to understand what national standards would say for a certain position, how many square feet they should have. There was an immediate recognition by every department we met with that we understand that, but that's not us. We're already more efficient in how we want to use our space right from the get-go. So, there's a lot of that already built in. So, what did our preliminary study tell us? So, I'll focus on the old courthouse first because that seemed to play out fairly straightforward. The existing gross building square feet is a little over 20,000. As we looked at some of the security and programmatic issues that Joe just talked about, we determined or are putting forward that the only groups that can really stay in that building and function together are the courts, the DA, and probation. Adding any other entity to that in the amount of space that they really need to function creates that public security issue that just is problematic in that building. Again, being historic, it's not like we could just pop on a new lobby or do some things. It's kind of limited in terms of what we can do with the space. So, our current thinking is we keep those three entities in that building. When the APD moves out, we grow into that space. The state, we've met with them, they have a fairly aggressive growth projection through- 2029. That's what all these numbers are based on, through 2029. Their anticipated growth is more extensive, more aggressive than what we've used in all the other pieces.
And when you say growth, what does that interpret? Is that just population?
Population growth, and therefore, there are factors of, if population grows this much, we'll need one more courtroom, we'll need two more DAs, we'll need. And so we've gone through all that detail with them. Again, if population doesn't grow, then they don't need the growth in staff and courtrooms and all that. So we've tried to come up with a plan that, based on our best projections, can meet that need. And I point out that their, the courthouse functions are based on a much more aggressive growth because when we talk about the details of their plan, we don't think really their ultimate need kicks in for quite some time versus some of the needs that we'll talk about are here today and their needs that we're living in right now. If we want to add one more person in this building, it'd be really hard to do.
So it's two aspects. It's getting up to standards of current existing facilities. And the second aspect is projecting the future and the growth that's going to happen.
Correct.
And let me ask you about this 16-7 number. So the way I read this, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is if we take the courthouse and we take out everything that's not part of courts, DA, probation.
Correct. Correct.
We take out the treasures, we take out the Aspen Police Department, we take out all the stuff that's not part of that.
Yep.
We still need in addition 16,700 square feet?
No, that's the net that we need in a building that can house 20. So we're-
Okay.
So-
So we're good-
We're good.
In the courthouse with obviously redesign-
Correct.
-to house those departments, but we're now displacing other departments. We don't have to worry all that much about the Aspen Police Department, although we've got a partnership with them to some extent, so we want to work with them. But we do have to worry about where we're going to put the treasurer's office, the assessor's office. What other departments am I missing?
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff. The sheriff's office is not included in that, in that 16,700.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and some of the, well, we did, you know, you don't want to get too far down into the weeds, but you'll see I use the word gross square feet. And there's net, and there's gross, and there's rentable, and there's all different ways to calculate square feet, and they can get really confusing. The way one relates to another is a lot based on the efficiency of a building. And the old courthouse is highly inefficient in terms of if you need a 10-by-10 office for someone, it's kind of hard to create a 10-by-10 office in that building three times over. Well, you just went out into the hallway, you can't go out in the hallway because it can't knock down that wall. So because that building is inefficient, and I don't mean to sound that in a negative way, like I'm picking on the building because it's a beautiful, you know, it's a beautiful building, and it needs to be maintained that way. But it does mean that you just can't be efficient and pack a lot of people in there. So the minute we try to add one more group into that building, it flows out into the hallways, it messes with the layout, and it creates security issues that all of a sudden, that group needs unfettered public access where the other groups need a more secure environment. And that's some of our push is we need to create a place where the security, people that need security have it, and if it needs to be unfettered, they're going someplace different. At least that's our intention in what we're showing.
So, and again, the question in my mind is if the courts, the transporting of prisoners to and from the court from the jailhouse, if that's the challenge, where, has there been a consideration that maybe the courthouse shouldn't house the courts? That that should be what we're rebuilding?
Yes.
And that it's easier to fit, you know, open space and trails into a space there than it is to fit things that need high-security issues in that older building?
Yeah, we discussed for a fair amount of time a new public safety building that would house courts and the sheriff and those functions. It certainly would be more efficient in terms of use of square feet to do that, and it would give you the ability to create all the interconnectivity, the security, everything that you'd want. But certainly that comes with a price tag to do that, both in terms of dollars and in terms of space need. Space on the ground, where can I put a building that's that big? So those were some challenges that we had, and certainly those can be investigated more into some more detail, but we-
It was R and L's recommendation that the old courthouse could adequately serve that function and be secured with minimal renovation for these departments versus the other departments. The administrative departments tend to flex more with changing community needs than the courts. And so they actually recommended that the old courthouse would be better suited for these functions and that the new space be developed with that kind of flexibility and flexing in mind, and we could do that more efficiently at a lower price tag.
The retrofit outweighed the flexibility needed for the new space. It still works well-
Given the other considerations, like the size of the building.
Yeah. It still works well as a courthouse. Once those other functions are out, those are well-functioning courtrooms. And the connectivity is something that still could be investigated down the road. It's not easy, given what we're talking about, to connect with some sort of a tunnel, but it's not impossible either. It's just what's the price tag and how do you pull that off?
And we could look into that in design, for sure. So, okay.
So that's the old courthouse. So then we move to this building. And I apologize, it's kind of, again, some funkiness of data, but what we ended up saying is, okay, that works for the courthouse, so now let's take everybody else, sheriff, admin, clerk, assessor, IT, you guys, everything that's in this building, plus community development that needs to move here from City Hall at some point in the future. And let's, R and L programmed that group based on national standards of, you know, each person needs so many square feet depending on their position. That would require 51,000 to 54,000 square feet of space. We have about 18,000, a little less than 18,000 in this building. So that would leave a short, about 33,000 to 37,000 square feet, give or take. Our proposed standards, which, you know, I'm sure you're aware, this city has their ongoing effort that John talked about, our standards are right in line with what they're looking to do in terms of space allocations. Are much more efficient, people are willing to be much more compact in their workspaces as long as those workspaces are well-designed, lots of natural light, good HVAC, good IT connectivity, good ways to work together, meeting space, flex space. Based on that, we would only need 36,000 to 40,000 square feet. So you can see it's a sizable reduction. And on that would need about 18,000 to 22,000 square feet of additional square footage to accommodate that need.
Do you have a number on what our existing square footage is today for those departments, including the space in the City Hall, including the, because the sheriff's department is over in the courthouse. So this building is 18,000 square feet.
Yep.
But add the sheriff's department, add the assessor's, you know, all the, so what are we functioning with today for these departments?
This is a summary, Rob, so we do have that, all of that broken down by department. But basically, in City Hall, we have community development and about 1,800 square feet. And then our square footage for the old courthouse and courthouse plaza is 18,000 square feet.
Yeah, sheriff right now is in about 3,500 square feet.
And I guess the assessor's-
Treasurer and assessor together are about 1,700 square feet.
So that's about 7,000 roughly square feet outside of this, and we're proposing to move that 7,000 here. So our base footprint is the 18,000 plus the 7,000 square feet, or 25,000 square feet. So we're going from 25 to 37 to 40 is the recommendation. So, I mean, that's a growth of 40%? 50%? 40%?
But we're also adding the new IT department, the bits.
Okay.
And who went from one person to-
Will be at eight.
It'll be at eight people.
Yeah. They're in here now.
And I don't think it's really apples-to-apples, Rob, because when you look at the space, if you take an example, community development, those guys are working out closets.
Oh, no, I, absolutely. I get that-
Just to make that-
I get the aspect that we have to do two things here. One, we have to get closer to standard, you know, because we're not at standard right now in the way our workforce is working. I get that. And two, we have to anticipate the growth. So there's a piece of that, you know, of going from, you know, add, you know, IT or the increase that we need there, you know, say we're starting at 30,000, you know. There's one piece of that that's a growth in getting to standard, which we can calculate in terms of the standards that aren't being met. And then the other piece of that is really looking at what our anticipated growth is and what our needs are going to be for the future. I think the public needs to be well-aware, too, that we're not building this for a five-year lease, a 10-year lease, a 15-year lease. We're building this for 50 years down the road. You know, we're building this for 75 years down the road. So, I mean, that's a lot of what we're trying to anticipate now. So we have to balance what our budgetary restraints are for moving forward with that with what our long-term future plans are. So I absolutely get the fact that we're not at standard right now for various things, and that's going to be part of the growth. But the way I would look at it is separating those two issues and then making a policy decision of what's reasonable at this time for that 50-year future.
And so in a future discussion, we can break that down more specifically, but just, I think a way of getting at what you're talking about, basically for the planning horizon for the departments that we're listing here, we're projecting less than 1% growth a year in terms of staff. So the growth rate, the new growth that's driving, you know, square footage need is pretty minimal. Really, the majority of the square footage that we're talking about is going to be to meet current needs, you know, where we stand today. We have been very, very conservative, and we've talked to departments, and, you know, this is part of our re-baselining after 2009 and really looking at, we discovered ways to improve productivity or use technology or change business, but, you know, whatever it is that we've done, we feel are practices that we can carry forward into the future. And so our growth projections are extremely conservative. So you're not, this isn't about building a lot of empty space for future growth. And so I think that's kind of what you're trying to get at, Rob, if I'm understanding your question.
Yeah, well, I'm getting at the fact that there are two different issues here. One, building for the future. And two, getting people in adequate workspace to be able to provide the services. That's what this is about, is to be able to provide the services to the highest level possible. And then three, the issue is balancing it with budgetary constraints, of course, is part of everything that we do. But looking at 25,000, 27,000 square feet of existing infrastructure that we have today that doesn't meet the needs to provide that service, going to 36, that's about a 30%, 35% growth. Part of that growth is based on future needs, and part of that growth is based on the inadequacies that we've got in our current facilities. And I agree with both of those things. We do have future needs, and we do have inadequacies within our facilities. But that's the question that I think the public is going to say when they say, oh, you're growing your facilities by 30%. Well, okay, show me that you've got inadequacies and show me that you've got those future needs. That's what the public is going to be asking me when I walk the streets after this article hits the paper. So I want to have those answers. So that's why I'm breaking it down into something that I can explain to the public.
Great. So this speaks to just what we were talking about, that we wanted to highlight for you kind of based on a number of employees and that growth question. You know, there's 200, roughly, I think there's 260, you know, you never know day-to-day, but roughly 260 total employees. 150 are covered under this group that we were just talking about, the square feet allocation for. So today, that number is 149. And as you can see, as we grow, based on the budget that's coming to you here shortly, I think the request is there for five more. And you can see the growth is not much, going all the way out to 2029, projecting 167 employees. That is not a ton of bodies that we're trying to accommodate when we show you these square feet numbers. There's not some pie in the sky growth projection being put in here in terms of we're going to grow by 200 employees.
And this is about 1% employee growth per year.
Compounded.
Compounded throughout, so.
But doesn't that, I mean, that low growth production, that can put you in the same position that a high-growth production does, which is you end up with a short span of usable space going into the future. So we end up at a block again in a short amount of time. So what you're really trying to do is base it on actual, real growth, not, because 1% sounds too low to me. Nothing grows at 1%. So I just don't know that, I mean, it's more palatable, but I'm not sure that it's going in 10 years that it'll be realistic.
Sure. Do you mind if I respond to that? So, Mike, I think you're right, but I think what we see over a long period of time is that actually our counts ebb and flow with our economic cycles. And so we will see probably periods where we're a little bit more crunch than these numbers will show, but during periods of downturn and such, just like any other organization, we tend to contract a little bit and grow. So that line averages out. And what we've done a good job of as an organization, we've developed a skill about being able to flex and contract with those spaces to be more efficient. I think as an organization, we're comfortable continuing to do that, but it's got to be in spaces that are adequate for us to do our jobs well and to serve the public well. And so we think we've got an opportunity in the downtown core right now that is going to accommodate that need for a long time. I do think that you may be right, too, in that the future, we may need to have another incremental step. And you'll be seeing that, this isn't part of today's discussion, but it is part of what the Budget Review Team right now is considering, is doing more master planning at our public worksite so that if in the future we do find that we need to overflow, maybe we have an opportunity if we have to develop additional space for some of our back-office services, that we can appropriately plan for that overflow there. So this isn't our only shot. We think that we can develop the downtown campus to meet our needs for quite a while, but we do have a safety valve that we're going to be proposing to you, too.
Yeah, I mean, what Joey was talking about was the demands, sort of demands put on that department by present-day standards. And so standards change apart from growth rates. And so you have- And so you, so you have a degree of sophistication that's put on departments that we didn't have before, even though the department stays at the same size, or more or less the same size. So you have those, those, you know, external factors that are not related to growth, but related to sophistication. So for, for instance, we have a IT department now that we didn't have two years ago. So that, and that, that was a conscious decision, that we needed that sophistication within our, within our organization. And Joey's facing the same thing, and I think community development's going to face the same thing. So I, I, I'm just, it's reassuring that there's overflow room somewhere, but it's, but I don't think you can relate it directly to growth and economic factors.
Well, yeah, that, that's just one set of factors. We also have talked a lot, and we don't know how to anticipate, what is technology going to do to the future office? You know, is the office of the future for a lot of our functions going to be a login and a laptop versus bricks and mortar? I think that may be true for some positions. I don't think it'll probably ever be true of law enforcement or, you know, some of our, our services. But we, we also have been cautious about not wanting to build too much, because those changes that we're talking about, technology and processes can cut the other way in terms of space need, too.
Rachel?
Yeah, you know, this is just too big a conversation, seems, for the one hour. And I don't know if others are willing, but, you know, if you ordered in pizza, oh, yeah, we can work through lunch, I'll be okay with that. I did want to say something, though, before we move forward, is that I think we need to put this whole conversation and project in a greater context than space need for employees or future growth or this or that. And what I'm kind of thinking is that, you know, we need to say, what is the economy of our county as a whole? That, that's the economic engine. Is it trillions, I mean, billions? I know our real estate value isn't billions, so we need, what are our county real estate values that we're serving? What is the economic engine in the county? What is that like? And then compare that to when the move was made into the Courthouse Plaza. You know, it's kind of like trying to, to sell five hundred dinners a night out of the same space you used to sell two hundred and fifty. And, and that's kind of where we're at. And we, we need to put this in the context of the economy itself, not just, oh, county services and county needs and things like that, because we're at that engine, whether it's the snow plowing on the road, whether it's your, your clerk facilities and coming in and checking your old plat from twenty years ago and finding it on the microfiche, you know, all these different jobs and obligations. But, you know, there's some stats about this building and these spaces have been just flat for twenty-five, thirty years, you know, and the output has, has increased tremendously to try to deal with these things. But, you know, we're commensurate. It, it would be like saying, you know, the ski, we would not be doing this economy if the ski company had not built the gondola, let's put it that way. You know, they hadn't had, whoa, we had to redo the sun deck. Oh, well, you know, the raft of bus barn, you know, has been redone. You know, all these things continue to grow, and I, I understand the desire to, you know, freeze and keep everything under glass and have it be exactly the same, but life doesn't happen that way. We grow, our economy grows, our county has grown. You know, Snowmass Village, I don't think was, was there when the police and Snowmass and the sheriff's office were sharing that basement from the beginning. You know, I mean, that's just the magnitude of, of different people to serve. So we have to put it into the context of the county we serve and, and look at it from the outside in, not the other way around, maybe from the inside out. Thank you.
All right. We have about five minutes in our scheduled time period right now.
Well, would you, I guess Rachel had thrown out a suggestion, you know, we, we can either kind of push through to the speed of the discussion in terms of schedule and what we see the opportunities being, or we can continue to spend some time and order in some lunch, and you guys can have a, probably a good break, but not a full lunch break. Is there any preference on that?
I, I think we should just hit some of the high points and have a, come back for part two.
Okay. High points in the next ten minutes. Let's jump to proposed solutions.
Yeah. So to solve all of the things we just talked about, our proposed solution, and we'll, we'll get into some more specifics here, eighteen to twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand square foot, new public safety building on the current site right, right behind us, would house the sheriff, it would also house some of the administrative or other functions that were in that list, overflow. Exactly who is in there isn't yet determined. It would be a design discussion of who would be better served in what spaces on the shakeout. The Courthouse Plaza, we continue with that renovation plan that I think you guys are aware of, that would essentially open this up at all three levels of this into a more open, flexible floor plan. At that point, we're confident we could accommodate the department needs, including a little bit of growth in this building, and, and take care of the HVAC and IT infrastructure issues and really have some great spaces. And the courthouse, as we discussed, would get remodeled to house just those three functions. That's the proposed solution. We did talk about the joint facility. Real quick, when you run the numbers based on us having to participate in land cost that the city would, would put on our side of the ledger, it pans out to be significantly more expensive than the options we'll show you. It's certainly something that you guys could bring back up, but it, it was significantly more expensive. So I guess...
So we looked at, we looked at partnering on the Zepansas property, and when you condiminimize it, just makes sense. It's cheaper for us to build on land we already own than to buy land and build on it.
Yeah.
Even with some of the opportunities for shared space. There was some opportunities for shared space, not that many, particularly the police and sheriff's departments. And the, the numbers turned out to be significantly more for us.
So, so we kind of threw, we put together many more options than this, but these were the four that kind of percolated to the top of implementing the program we just talked about. First one would be to, to run the, to build a public safety building first, followed by a remodel of the Courthouse Plaza, and then followed by remodel of the courthouse. The advantage to that would be that when we build this new building, occupants of this Courthouse Plaza building could temporarily relocate into that while we did remodel here. It stretches out the timeline a little bit, as you see, but that's the advantage to that. We looked at doing this courthouse, option two, doing the remodel first, because we're, we're essentially, you know, a month or two away from being able to do that. That pushes the construction cost out further for the new public safety building, which has some inflation issues with it. So this ended up costing a fair amount more. Harp, I'll skip to option four. Option four was that purchase condo space from the city-developed facility. From a logistics standpoint, it works okay. It does cost more than, than what our preferred option is. So the preferred option would be concurrently build both this new public safety building and remodel of this building, which would involve a temporary relocation of the functions in this building to some leased or other available space. But we do pick up both construction efficiencies that result in substantial dollars. The impact on the employees is much less, because they don't have to live in a construction zone while that's all happening. And most importantly, for the, for the public who's accessing those functions, they don't have to be trying to work their way through a maze of construction fences and whatnot to differing entrances and, and ways to get to those services. It also was the, the least expensive of the options. So that's what we put out real quick. Again, we're sitting here, and this is the Courthouse Plaza building. There's the jail. The proposal is to, to essentially connect from the jail to the Courthouse Plaza with some footprint to be determined. We can't connect to the old courthouse because of the historic designation. We need to stay off of that building by a little bit. But that's, just, this is what it could be, not what it is. And the next one, again, this always wreaks havoc when you do something like this, but, but the idea was, guys, give me some sense for what are we talking about? This is, this is looking down through, through the Veterans Park, just to give you some sense of some, I just cut and paste a different building that I had done in the past and stuck it in the back to get some sense for what, what might it, how might it feel in that plaza?
This is just massing.
Yeah.
It's in a suggested design, what it would look like, anything like that, it'd probably be different, but to get a sense of massing, you know, what, what does that look like or feel like, or how's it framing our Veterans Memorial Park? And it actually, you know, from a massing perspective, frames it nicely. And so we wanted to just go give you an idea what it is we're talking about.
And actually, some of that mass, sort of exists in the jail.
Yeah, so you can see the, kind of the jail back behind is actually a see-through building, so there's the jail behind. It's my magic transparent building. But, you know, we don't even know if it needs a, it would need a third story yet. Some of that's what, we're right on the verge of, can we build a big enough footprint and keep it on two with potential future growth for three? We haven't gotten to that level of detail yet. We're still at, you know, the thirty thousand-foot level, just trying to look at these things. So the challenge is to make that happen, obviously, funding. Sequencing does have an impact both on the funding and on employees and, and the public. The design of that facility, what it, what it would be, and, and the amount of input we'd need to make sure that met our needs, and the temporary relocation for folks. So that was the mad dash to finish two minutes late.
Any questions at this point? I do think we need to schedule some time to bring back more discussion of this. Steve?
I, I think doing it this way, where we got the whole picture, even though we had to compress the last half hour of the discussion, was good, because that gives us food for thought, and we can be cogitating on the different things before we then get together and have further discussion.
And just for the, just to, to close out, staff right now, through the budget review team and the leadership team, is trying to put together a budget that accommodates this staff preferred option, this kind of budgetary number. And our two thousand and fifteen budget and five-year plan, ten-year plan, so you can see what, what does it take to do this within our existing revenue streams, and what kind of choices are we making? So it's our intent to try and bring forward an option to use the board under, right now, that preferred option. There's a lot that can happen between now and then, a lot more discussions within our current revenue streams. And so we're, we're working hard on that right now to see what that looks like, and we can continue to bring back this discussion. I guess the question is, would the board like another discussion similar to follow-up on this prior to talking about budget, or do you want us to incorporate that into our budget discussions at this point?
I would, I would like to spend a little more time talking about these options, because it was very quick, which I understand, but I, I've got some questions about delving into these options a little more in depth and, and sort of the consequences of some of these. So I would like to have a follow-up first, personally.
And, and I would like that follow-up to include a little bit of, not phasing of the project, but phasing of the decision-making process moving forward. I mean, how do we really analyze how that building's going to be used? How it's, you know, do we do a twenty percent design portion first to take a look at it so that we know we're moving in the right direction, and that sort of stuff? I think that's important from a policy-setting standpoint of building a fairly substantial infrastructure that, on the surface right now, we feel is needed. Yeah, Rachel?
Yeah, you know, I, I close real quickly by saying, we have to realize there are deadlines that are imposed on us as much as our current space needs. And those are the relocation from the city offices. You know, they need that space back. No, it hasn't been a, a joint comm dev department with one director for a long time. And so, you know, it's not as if everyone's sitting here chomping at the bit to design new buildings. It's, it's, these are realities. The other, of course, is the needs of the court, which continue to grow. I think that we should investigate and at least have some memo or short piece about are there, or what are the potential state funds for the court remodel? They seem to be very minimal, but I know that, I mean, maybe they're security-only or something, but I know that there's just a lot of push with county commissioners to say, why are we paying for all the courts' needs in the state of Colorado for the court system, for their facilities? And why isn't the state of Colorado creating a fund or something like that? And that perhaps is something that we could try to work, you know, legislatively with some of our leaders over the same next few years to try to bring some funding in. But I've heard stories from Pueblo County and all these other counties, they built the new courthouse, they built the new jail, and either they don't have the jail occupants they thought they would, and so they have the reversions there, or they're paying for these court costs that they cannot absorb, that their county budget doesn't, you know, yet it's an obligation to do the courts. And so I think we need to look at strategies to see what we can do to bring long-term funding into this problem area as well.
All right. With that, we'll wrap up until one o'clock this afternoon. Thanks, Chris. Welcome back. This is our work session, Picken County. We're the county commissioners, and our afternoon agenda, we're starting off with a caucus discussion. Cindy Huben is here to lead us on this one.
Hi, thank you. I'm Cindy Huben with the Community Development Department. And the board had asked for a little update on the caucus structure in Picken County. As you know, recently, we've had a couple folks who are potentially interested in creating caucuses, so this is a refresher, if you will. There's no action required by the board today. This is, this packet is informational, and it allows the board, as I said, to refresh your familiarity with the legislature, legislation and the function of caucuses in the Picken County structure. But in summary, attached to your memo is the chapter fi, or Article Five of the Home Rule Charter, which basically says that any citizens' group can form a caucus. And it's, it's derived from geographic, social, and cultural elements that are similar in nature. And that type of grouping can be recognized by the Board of County Commissioners, or I should say, may be recognized by the Board of County Commissioners through a resolution, recognizing that, in fact, that group has taken on the qualities that Article Five talks about. And I would say the main thing in that article is that the Board of County Commissioners at the time this structure was created wanted to ensure that the voter, the voters within a caucus group were qualified electors who reside in that caucus area as well as non-resident property owners. So this is a unique situation, actually, when you step back and think about it, because oftentimes we hear that second homeowners or non-residents don't really have the ability to participate as much in local government. Well, this is one opportunity where that local, excuse me, non-residents, but people who own property in the area, have a chance to work with their caucus groups in their neighborhoods. But it's also clear in the article that, in fact, these caucus groups have no more or less status than an individual citizen, and they're recommendatory to the Board of County Commissioners, and that, in fact, the Board of County Commissioners can hear what caucuses have to say as a group through their recommendations. And by practice through the years, the way the board has interacted with the caucus groups has been, probably you're going to give me information that I'm not aware of, but they, at the normal caucus meetings, oftentimes the board or staff at the normal caucus meetings, oftentimes the board or staff are invited to give updates about county business at the caucus meetings. Also, the Board of County Commissioners looks at our land use guidelines, and those guidelines, then we use as community development staff when we go out to the caucus to say, these are the general principles or guidelines, if you will, that the Board of County Commissioners have adopted that feel that this brings the commonalities to all caucuses in all areas of Picken County. So when those, when those groups are also developing neighborhood master plans, those guidelines can be used. And the way Ellen and I have posed that guideline to the caucus groups recently is that, in fact, if you stray too far from these overarching principles and guidelines that I believe you looked at in, I want to say, February, and updated, then, you know, the P and Z and the Board of County Commissioners may have questions about your, your master plans and want to discuss those elements with you. So that with the master plans, the land use guidelines, and generally being a body that we use as a county to disseminate information and to get public input on various projects, that's pretty much how caucuses are used. There's not a lot of structure behind it. If John Ely were here today, he would remind me to tell you that, that you may take recommendations from caucuses, but you're not obligated to. They are recommending bodies. So with that in mind, if you have any questions for me, I think I've pretty much covered the fact that, you know, they're the main way we get citizen input in the county, and it's been very successful. And the caucuses that I work with are always very appreciative of that structure in the county because they know that they are heard by the Board of County Commissioners. While they may not always be agreed with, they're heard by the commissioners.
Rachel?
Yeah, thank you for the overview, Cindy. As you know, this really came to us from residents at the Upper Maroon Creek Road area to ask about forming their own caucus, because while it's still shown on the map, the Maroon Castle Caucus has been inactive for as long as I've been on this board. I mean, there's been attempts to rally a few members, and there's been times when individual citizens from those areas react to a proposal, but not as a formal caucus process or caucus vote. So why don't you go into a little bit of what is the process for formation of a caucus? And, I mean, we had that letter from Marcela Larson that seemed to have implied that once they have gotten the signatures from a certain geographic area and members, then they are a caucus, and we just need to start recognizing them.
Right. Well, there's no obligation for you to recognize them as a caucus. Citizen groups can form and call themselves a caucus, but to be recognized by the board, that takes a formal resolution of approval, which then, as I mentioned, within that resolution of approval, you would probably make the considerations that are within Article Five, which basically say that the bylaws should recognize the voting membership as residents, qualified electors within the caucus area as well as non-resident property owners. And then you, but that's pretty much, other than recognizing the fact that it's a, an area of similar geographic, it says cultural and...
I forgot the language you're going to read it. So recognize caucus area, and this is section 4.5. Recognized caucus areas are to the greatest extent possible, shall reflect geographically contiguous areas with social, economic, cultural and environmental communities of interest. There shall be only one recognized caucus in each geographic area. Each caucus shall provide proposed definite boundaries for their caucus area to the board. And so while there can be, you know, there, there's no limit on organizing, you know, calling a meeting and organizing for purposes and making recommendations to the board in terms of being recognized by the board, which comes with some kind of staff support and, and, you know, a minimal amount of financial support, it really has to meet these requirements. So it can't be duplicative, and you all need to consider whether a proposed caucus area meets all of the criteria in terms of being geographically contiguous and having economic, cultural and environmental communities of, of interest. And also paying attention, you can only recognize one caucus per geographic area.
So kind of cutting to chase, where does that leave us with a recognized caucus area that is entirely inactive and a subgroup of that who would like to become their own caucus without having to try to notify and reinvigorate hundreds of neighbors up Castle Creek and, you know, Meadowwood and these other areas that had previously participated in that caucus?
In speaking with John Ely about just that issue, I think the board would have to go back to the resolution recognizing the Maroon and Castle Creek Caucus and reauthorize that in a new way, recognizing them as separate caucuses or recognizing the Maroon Creek Caucus now as a new caucus and the other without representation being defunct. Through, through the eyes of the county, now, the, the individuals within Castle Creek may say, well, we still want to be a caucus that may invigorate them, and, and they may re-initiate a caucus status.
So leaves the question as to what dissolves a caucus? Because that's not in our guidelines at all, or not that I can see.
It's not.
I mean, its inactivity, does that nullify the resolution that was made?
Totally, totally.
Right, I, I don't know.
But absent taking action, where does it stand? Is there a Maroon Castle? Until we dissolved it, is there still a Maroon Castle Caucus?
Right. And the other question I was going to ask was, apparently, there's no, just reaffirming, really, there's no size limit or minimum or maximum number of participants in a caucus or no, no size limit on the geographic area. It could be as small or as large as is Anheuser and have the other conditions.
So two things. The, what we're really talking about, the board's role, is whether you recognize a caucus area. And I think the ability to recognize a caucus area inherent to that is the ability to also, what would the right for unrecognized, a caucus area for inactivity. But you need to do that, just like you need to recognize a caucus area by resolution. You would also have to take the opposite action by resolution before creating or not creating, recognizing another caucus. So there, there's probably two actions that would have to, to take place. So that's one question. There's also, I think, some other discussion about potential other caucus area formation. And while you're right, Rachel, there's no specific kind of guidelines for you to say, what is a geographic area of interest, or what is a community of interest, or environmental area of interest? You do need to find that the, the proposed caucus area encompasses enough of a contiguous area or enough of an area that would share a common interest, however you define that, you know, geographically, it's by a watershed or drainage, you know, like we did with Castle and Maroon Creeks, or by some kind of land use pattern so that you're not creating or recognizing a subgroup of an area that would otherwise have, you know, common interest as, as representing that whole. And so there's no guidelines, but you guys really need to think through what is that contiguous kind of, both population and interest area in recognizing the caucus?
And, and it's interesting that you can't have two geographical areas overlapping because you could have a group that wants to maintain a larger area and a group that wants to just be involved with the smaller area because they have smaller interests. I mean, a very similar analogy to this, it's kind of a weird one, is, is appellations for wine-growing regions. You've got larger areas, Napa, and then within Napa, you've got Stags League, you know. But the point is, is that they're, they're legally defined through an organization to share a common geographical area, just like it's stated in ours. Obviously, it's not economic or social or those sorts of things, but they do overlap, is the point. So, and I'm not so sure that that makes sense for, you know, why should the people way up on one end of Maroon Road be dictating what's happening down around, around the Highlands, the high school? So, you know, and, and maybe there, there is room for overlapping there. The other statement that I would make too is, much like a, maybe there should be something worked in, much like incorporation, where if you don't file your, your state, you know, your annual documents, you dissolve. So that there's, there's something that has to happen to keep them active, so we don't have to create an act of a resolution dissolving a caucus area. And they just have to stay current enough to say, hey, are we going to file this this year, or do we want to dissolve? And, you know, to keep them active.
Yeah.
I, I'm just throwing out things after discussion.
I was going to say, because the code doesn't require that a caucus have a chair or vice chair or executive committee?
Well, it's interesting because it talks about each recognized caucus must designate a set date, time and place for its annual meeting when officers are elected, but we don't say what officers.
Right. Because I was going to say, have we named the officers of the Castle-Maroon Caucus?
Today, no.
And they had a set meeting date once a year? You know, I mean, it seems that somehow people are dissolving themselves by not fulfilling these requirements.
So within the charter, each caucus adopts its own operating procedures and its own bylaws. So I, I think what we'd expect with an organization that there'd be, you know, some...
Something, some structure.
There, there's really nothing that requires a specific structure, right? And the bylaws could define a process or procedure that the caucuses use to arrive at a decision that has nothing to do with a hierarchy, for example.
Right, yeah.
There, there's really nothing in it that requires any formal organization on our part, other than a meeting occurring and the request coming to you and the board having a finding of this geographic.
Yeah, but again, I, I would just read that if it says meet once a year, elect officers, there's got to be some form of structure. Now, they can determine themselves if you want 20 vice chairs or one, but, you know, when it comes to communicating the will of the caucus after some sort of vote or discussion has taken place, there's got to be a point of contact. You can't have five different people saying, I think the caucus said this, and I think the caucus said that, and I think the caucus said this, and we're all vice chairs. I mean, you can't, you just can't operate like that. And most of the caucuses don't. I mean, most of the caucuses are highly effective, highly organized and have a lot of participation. Woody Creek being one of the best examples.
Ellen, project one.
Just a, just a quick addition. In the past, you have weighed in on, on bylaws for various caucuses, I think specifically on voting procedures, to make sure that you believe that the voting procedures that are set up are reasonable and fair. And there's nothing that specifically relates to that in, in our Home Rule Charter chapter, but you, you have weighed in and influenced bylaws to some extent in the past. And I don't know if, if there's any need to make a revision to, to be sure that you have that opportunity if you want to or, or not, but...
I, I think, in my mind, the, the weight of the structure goes in line with the, with the, and I'm kind of thinking this as I say it, with the weight of the recommendation. You know, I mean, it, it's a recommending body. It really, you know, we want to, we want to listen to the citizens, and this is a way of gathering information. The more, the more we can kind of make sure that information is structured properly and gets to us in a formal way and that the organization that's giving us that recommendation has maintained its communication channels. I mean, if all of a sudden Maroon Castle, you know, put an ad in the paper that they wanted to meet and followed all the guidelines that are in here, and two people showed up and they had a vote, and they both voted for something, and that comes as a recommendation, how heavy do we actually, you know, because they're not meeting on a regular basis, so there aren't people expecting a meeting like the last Thursday of every month is the Woody Creek, you know, with the exception of November and, and a different month. So, so, you know, they know to show up at those meetings, they know that their voice is going to be heard at those meetings. So the, it is a recommending body, and the structure that they form themselves on their own really helps us dictate the weight of the recommendation that's coming to us. Yeah, Steve?
On a related issue, there's, the different caucuses have different voting mechanisms. And in the instance, so the Woody Creek Caucus and the Snowmass Capital Creek Caucuses, there's been some, a little bit of dissension about these, you know, how people can vote, whether they can vote by proxy or whether they can vote over a telephone if they're not actually at the meeting, that sort of a thing. And looking through here, there's really no guideline from the, from the county rules that dictate that. So would that just be the caucus bylaws then that would dictate how their, their specific thing functions?
Right. And I think that Ellen hit it because in the past, I believe what you've done when you have recognized a caucus with your resolutions, you also are reviewing their bylaws to ensure that it talks about, you know, just those two elements, that non-resident property owners get to vote and that the other voters are qualified electorates in, within that caucus area. So it's a, you know, very minimal standard.
And this is something that came up the other day, but qualified electors in the state of Colorado, they really don't have to be county residents. The Firing Pan Caucus encounters a lot of Eagle County, and George was saying the Emma Caucus has a lot of Eagle County as well. So, you know, it makes sense in terms of it being still one community of interest in geographic area, but, you know, it's, it is a point where you have non-Picken County property owners, let's put it that way, whether they're voters or not in Colorado, separate, but it doesn't need, doesn't really even limit it to Picken County voters.
And I was curious on that, given our conversation with Eagle County, that George brought up the discussion about the Emma Caucus, because there's a map in our packet, but it doesn't really show any Eagle County area being part of that Emma Caucus. And is that not correct? Is, is our Eagle County, is Eagle County property part of the Emma Caucus?
It's in the map. It may be hard to see on that map, but...
Just right across the highway there?
No, no, I mean, it's...
I mean, I'm seeing a map that has a straight line across it, like the Picken County line here.
No, it's, it's a...
And so that's true in the...
I mean, you know, the Emma Road, the Emma Road, part along the Emma Road is actually in Picken County for land, and then the homes are actually in Eagle County.
That's what I was just going to say.
And so we move around the Emma Road, but...
Some of the properties are split, and so you'll have a portion of a property within Picken County, which is where our caucus line is drawn, but the, you know, the, the language in the charter says qualified electorate property owner. And so technically, even if the house, so their voting, if their address is in Eagle County, they vote in Eagle County, but if their property crosses over into Picken County, it allows them to participate in the caucus. I think that's the situation, George.
Well, not exactly. I mean, I mean, that's how it lays out geographically, but it's a neighborhood.
But let me ask the question directly. Is there a piece of property that is solely in Eagle County that has voting rights in the Emma Caucus?
I was thinking about the highway split there over by the old Emma Buildings.
And I'm looking at the 2008 master plan of the Emma area, and I'm trying to get to the map, but it's... the map, but it's a little slow load.
I mean, not that it matters, I'm not complaining about. I was just kind of putting that out there as a, as a point of interest. I mean, I guess, I'm still kind of coming back to, what is the purpose of our meeting today? You know, from Marcella, I mean, other than reviewing the caucus process, you know, Marcella and those groups are asked to come to caucus, and what do we do?
Right. Actually, the board just asked that we have a little primer, if you will, on, and refresher on what our Article V states, and kind of how the caucuses have been functioning, and how we as staff and you as the board interact with the caucus, but there's really no other reason for the meeting, other than to say that from time to time, you come up against countywide issues, that you as a board have total authority and discretion to decide the outcome of those issues, and I just know in land use, where we have, you know, growth management, or square footage, or things like that, you get to decide whether or not individual recommendations are better, or if there's a better hole for the, for the county.
And so, Rachel, I don't think this particular discussion was motivated by the request to create the caucuses. I, I think the discussions that were happening, the request actually came out of when we were doing the recreation, recreational medical marijuana discussions, and what the roles of the caucuses are, and, yeah, and so, so, so we've had a number of policy issues where we've either asked caucuses to weigh in, or in some cases, really given caucuses an opportunity to substantively weigh in on policy decisions. And I think the board started questioning, well, what is, you know, let's step back for a second here, and really understand, particularly, I think with some of our new board members, what is the role of the caucus, or the caucus system according to the charter? What is our responsibilities vis-à-vis the caucuses? And then in the meantime, since we, you know, had those discussions, we've also had one, and actually two, um, locations approach us about potentially creating or having a new caucus area recognized. And so, um, our thinking was, well, the board should probably have any questions that you have regarding the walls' responsibilities and interactions of the caucuses, and the board answered before we bring up, bring forward requests for new caucuses. So that, that was really just responding to some of the questions, and the board stepping back and saying, hey, we really need to understand.
I think one of the things that's kind of been talked about here is, is maybe firming up a little bit the minimum standards of a caucus, and, and saying that, you know, if we are going to take your recommendations with a grain of salt, you know, this is, this is the minimum standard that we would like you to uphold. And those standards can be fairly low, because I know some of these caucus areas only meet once or twice a year, um, you know, but having a little bit of structure, people know, people in the caucus areas should know where to go to on the county website to find the information that's going on, so they know to show up for a vote. Because that's the concern, if a recommendation comes to us from a small group of people that are in advocacy of one direction, well, that doesn't really represent the caucus area, and without that structure, I find it hard to be there.
Well, one thing in line with that, Rob, is that John pointed out in the memo that, in fact, he had a paragraph that talked about the fact that we ought to look at the caucus, you as a board, when a recommendation comes forward, to ensure, in fact, that the notice and the conduct of the meetings, and attendance, and integration with the countywide objectives are all followed, in terms of your balancing the weight of a recommendation. And it's just like you say, the strength of the caucus kind of tells you where the recommendation is coming from. So I think that maybe we could do a better job as staff, when we bring a recommendation forward, to say, you know, the vote of the caucus was taken at a noticed meeting, it was done with the voting guidelines that are outlined here, and what the attendance was, and if in fact, there's any, um, common, commonality, or we're, or straying from the countywide objectives. And so, we could always maybe add a little bit more when we bring you a recommendation.
George, yeah, I disagree with that. Um, you know, the caucuses are set up, um, as a democratic process, where it's, many caucuses rely on representation, and to have to regulate based on number of people who are actually attending, number of people who are voting, versus those who are actually have elected officers to, to provide that input, and each caucus communicates to the members. But I don't see a need to, to change anything, or to over-regulate caucuses. I mean, as you said earlier, Cindy, it's a great opportunity for you to communicate to these neighborhoods, it's a great opportunity to get feedback, and when a recommendations come in, we as a board can just look at those recommendations, just as we do with any neighbor responses. But I, I, that's a road I don't want to go down, in terms of trying to regulate how caucuses have to operate.
No, I think you misunderstood what I was trying to say, George, because what I think Elie was pointing out is that the board, through Article V, does require at least one, once a year meetings-
Right.
-that in fact, appropriate notice, and that the bylaws are done, and that they have recognition of the voting. But that's really it. I just, I just meant to say that when we are reporting back to you on a recommendation, we can say that the, the caucus is in compliance with those things or not. Because there have been defunct caucuses, where maybe one person comes up and says, oh, I'm the caucus representative, and you go, well, really? You know, I don't know, so.
And I think, I mean, I, I see a little bit where George is going, but what I would argue for is what you just said, in terms of getting information about how that recommendation is reaching us. Because the reality is, that recommendation is a recommendation to the board of county commissioners, it's a recommendation to the five members of the board of county division, commissioners, as individual voters on this board. So, yes, absolutely, if two people show up on a meeting, I want to know that it was only two people that showed up on that meeting when that vote was taken. That's, that's important to me, as someone who makes a decision.
Unless there are people who are authorized by the caucus to do that review. Like the frying pan, as an example, they don't have a lot of people there year-round, and so when land use reviews come to them, they've set up a structure where we know who's going to be reviewing those land use reviews, and that has been sanctioned by the caucus. So it's, it's something that's very legitimate, but has it been vetted by every member of the caucus? No.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't want to get into over-regulating either, you know, just really clear on that, but when you're speaking with the voice of the caucus, you have, it has to be a legitimate voice. I mean, no matter how they're structured, and have chosen to structure themselves, then that has to be what's followed, and that has to be what we understand. I, I think we all probably know people who've said, I've stopped participating in my caucus, I felt, you know, it wasn't representing me anymore, or I don't believe in the direction it's going, and I've just stopped going. You know, you can look at the numbers, you'll have caucuses that have three, four hundred residences, and they have 23 active people, and they're not elected, and, you know, some people work two jobs, some people do or don't have that opportunity to participate, or have chosen that it just, you know, have been turned off by past members, I mean, I've gotten phone calls, don't pay any attention to this, there was a caucus takeover, they packed the room with 20 people who've never been there before in five years, and now they're all aboard, and what's gonna happen? Or, you know, all our representation was given away to the five elected officers, they're making their own shots and calls without checking back in with us, or telling us what's going on. And so, there can be failures of the caucus system. Again, I would say, overall, it's very valuable and helpful, but I think that part of this should be finding out how to make sure it's an effective communication tool. That if we are saying to Lance Clark, please go check with these caucuses about the new height restriction on Barnes that we're talking about, and I'd like to know that it goes out to an email list of 60 people, not that the one person got it, said, yeah, I'm okay with that, and sends it back in, unless we know from their bylaws that that one person was authorized to say that and make their own statement, and they didn't have to go out. But there, there could be differences between what we're asking for, and thinking we're getting, and what is happening on the ground.
And I think that's how we can do a better job of reporting back to you, maybe, on what we know about the caucus, individual caucus structure, and how they choose to, because some are very formal, some are not.
I mean, I don't think we're addressing a, a problem, because there isn't, there's not a problem. In fact, I would say, to staff's credit, caucuses are actually becoming fully re-engaged, going through the updating of their master plans, and they are spending, each caucus is spending tremendous amount of time and energy in doing that, and it's just a handful that are doing it.
Yeah.
Because you wouldn't expect hundreds to try to develop a master plan. And so there's a handful from each caucus that are working as a committee, and they will then, as each caucus communicates within their own realm, they'll communicate that out to their members, they'll get input, they'll bring it back to staff. So it's, it's a, it's a, the caucuses are, it's a successful program.
Yeah.
So I don't think we need to, I'm not sure why we think about needing to tweak, or to question, or-
Well, I just said why I think it's important to have legitimate reporting back, I mean, not to question, or tweak, or change. And when we authorized the money to develop the updated master plans, I was really clear that I wanted to make sure that we reached out to all the people within the geographic area, to say, we're updating the master plans, if you haven't been involved in your caucus for past three years, or any period of time, now's your chance to get involved, because other, you know, because they're changing things around you, they potentially are changing things around you. And so, I think the master plan process is good for reinvigorating, and that's, you know, specifically what I requested. I just been saying, I want to make sure that, and this, you know, maybe, maybe more the conversation stems from watching the Maroon Castle Creek Caucus go defunct. You know, that's, that's one that is not active, that's one that is not communicating with its members, that's one that is, it's a failure, in that it doesn't allow us that communication back and forth about various issues. So, I, you know, why did that one fail? Was it the citizens itself, or what? I don't know. They feel too overcome by the city of Aspen, they just lose enough year-round active resident members who cared to participate? Uh, you know, that's why it's worth looking at. I mean, but obviously, there's no decision for us to be made, we're not asking for a decision. It really comes back to, I believe, whether it's part of this topic or not, do we want to recognize the Upper Maroon Road area as a caucus area? I mean, we've got, they submitted a petition, signed by a certain number of residents in a certain area, to say, we'd like to form a caucus. And unless we're scheduling a separate work session for that discussion, and having those representatives in.
We will have a separate work session for the specific ones that might come for you to ask, because then you'll, we'll have to click into that process of, I don't know the right term either, but unrecognizing the broader Castle Maroon if we decide to go with the Maroon Creek, or any other example. But I too feel very fortunate, as a staff member, that we do have this caucus structure. It's been so helpful for us to be able to have, in the areas that do have active caucuses, that point of, you know, contact that does get disseminated on a lot of different levels. You know, anything from, there are going to be fireworks in the neighborhood tonight, to, to, can you help us with the master plan? So I think we're fortunate, and if we, if, um, if you think of any other ways we can help make that work better for you, we're happy to try to help.
Further discussion? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to move on to some future agenda stuff?
Should we call my group's team?
Please, I can do future agendas here. Um, I think that the biggest issue that we have with future agendas right now, and I did not plan this necessarily following up on our facilities discussion, but we are having trouble finding places to meet during election season. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and hand this out, because not all of these are currently reflected on your, your future agendas. Um, what you may recall is that the Rio Grande was not available for all of our meetings, and so for our, for our planning purposes, we had approached the city about using the City Hall meeting room for a couple of reasons. One, because it already is set up for TV broadcast, it's convenient to our regular meeting space, and it can be set up for Granicus. We're running into some conflicts right now that we have not gotten resolved, we're still working on, for example, Wednesday, October 22nd, and Wednesday, November 19th, there's municipal court conflicts, and they also have some regularly scheduled meetings that may require us to move some items around, and shorten some of our work sessions, so for example, Tuesday, November 18th, you know, we're kind of sandwiched in between some of their regular meetings. We are going to try and find some alternative locations at this point, we're not sure that we're going to be able to find any that will allow us to do our regular grassroots, or web streaming of those meetings, that we either have to rent space, or use another meeting space. But I just wanted the board to be aware, we may need to do some moving around on some of these dates where we're seeing conflicts with the meeting room schedule, and, you know, again, just to back up for a second, this is to accommodate this room being used during elections for ballot processing and such. The Rio Grande will also be used during elections as a, as a polling place, as a general election. We're moving our Granicus server from the Rio Grande to City Hall, that's not a move that's very easy to make, you can't just unplug it and plug it back in. So that's, that's why we're trying to find as many dates in the City Hall meeting facilities as possible. So we will keep looking for alternatives, this isn't necessarily something you need to take action on, I just want you to be aware, we're having difficulty this year because of elections needing both the Rio Grande and this room, and having to move our equipment funding meeting spaces for all of our planned meetings.
Rob? Yes, Steve?
Um, John, is there any possibility of using something like a library meeting room, and just have that be the permanent site, and do what's necessary to get the grassroots into there?
Well, we could, um, we could certainly look at that, we found that there are a number of programming conflicts with the library meeting room, too, but it is one that we may be able to use, kind of like we use the Rio Grande room. But again, we're, what we're finding is, there are so many community programs going on in all these available spaces, so we, we will definitely look at that. We're also gonna look at, you know, are there other spaces for many of our other partners, and maybe we record and rebroadcast our meetings instead of streaming online. This is a part of our facilities challenge, for sure. This is a part of our facilities challenge, for sure. And then just, you know, just to note, Rob, you and I missed this when, when we were meeting, there's a gap on November 11th where there's not a work session. That's because that's Veterans Day, and that is one of the county holidays.
Any other comments on?
I will most likely be here on the 6th because of that Veterans Day thing. I'll push things in that fashion. So that, that works fine for me.
I won't be here on the 6th.
So Rob is back, but Michael's out. Anything else? All right. Mike, is everybody?
Not everyone's here. We're still waiting on some representatives from the sheriff's office and then these two.
Vanessa here.
Vanessa, are other people coming? Should we tackle another agenda item before?
Let me call Alex.
Okay. Want to talk about the holidays? That's a fairly straightforward one.
Oh, and Vanessa?
Yeah. We had an MOI on holiday allocations for 2015. They parallel the 2013, or 2014, ten full closure days, two close early days. And they're laid out in our memo.
Just getting up to it. You know, what we're seeking is any comment from the board.
Rachel?
You know, my broader comment isn't on the holidays, but it is on the conflict we always have with the CCI December meeting and potentially the June meeting with our regular meetings. And we have talked in past years, said if we had enough advance notice, we could make sure that those conflicts don't happen. Now, last year, we were okay on one of those, too. So that's just my footnote for this, is that, you know, it's really awkward for Steve and I to have to choose between those two commitments. And, you know, we're more involved with CCI, and getting more successful things out of CCI than ever before. So I'd love to see us resolve this.
And that's regarding the Tuesday, Tuesday and Wednesday meetings?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's one thing to miss a work session, but it's always the regular that hurts. And we'll see what we can do to deal with that this year.
And in terms of discussion, one of the things that we could do is move that regular meeting.
Possibly.
To a different day.
We do in December to accommodate the holiday schedule, and we sometimes do in November to accommodate the Thanksgiving schedule. And so I hate to move on those meetings, but it's not unprecedented.
Yeah. John, anything else you'd like to?
You know, I just know, I was just going to note for open discussion, and I think you all saw this come through on email and starting to make the rounds on, on the media. But we are kicking off Phase Three of our air services study, which is really our public outreach component, both to share what we've found in terms of the aircraft that are likely to serve our community, commercial aircraft that are likely to serve our community in the future, and the types of physical changes we believe we'll need to make at the airfield to accommodate FAA safety requirements and design standards. We will be kicking off a series of coffee chats with, with me and airport staff at the airport every Monday and Thursday morning from 9:00 to 10:00. We're buying the coffee and the refreshments, so we're hoping people who have an interest in learning more about the air services study and commercial service will, will come join us. That's running through, from the September 22nd through October 23rd. Again, 9 to 10, and that's going to be at the airport terminal in the café.
That's every Wednesday?
That's every Monday and Thursday.
Every Monday and Thursday morning, yeah.
We also will be holding two public open houses. The first on Thursday, October 30th, at the Picking County Library over the lunch hour, 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the second will be held on Wednesday, November 12th, between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. at the Airport Operations Center off of Al Creek Road. And in addition to those opportunities for the public to come and visit directly with, with staff and consultants, we also will be making presentations to the councils for Snowmass, Assault, and the city of Aspen, which will be another opportunity for people to both hear what's going on at, at the airport and hopefully join us in one of these other forums to comment.
Yeah, I'm glad you, you added that, but I just wonder, would it make sense to have an open house up in Snowmass Village as well? Or is it just getting to be too, too complicated in terms of schedules?
It's certainly something that, that we could look at and explore. I, I think really the distant, one of the reasons we choose the AOC is it's a pretty similar distance for people to travel, you know, either from Aspen or Snowmass or even up from Assault, if they wish. So we found that that's a good location. It can be a little difficult for people to find, but we'll try and address that in the advertising. But if it's the board's desire, we can certainly look at adding another open house.
Rob?
Yeah, Michael.
Having just had a discussion about the caucuses and the effectiveness of the caucuses, I don't see why you don't reach out to the caucuses and go to their meetings.
And Michael, thank you for pointing that out. Actually, we are reaching out to caucus areas, we're reaching out to service organizations. We're going to be doing a lot of public outreach as part of this Phase Three. We're just trying to note some of the general presentations that anyone who's interested might attend, but we are going to be reaching out through a number of entities, including the caucuses, that we will be doing.
Yeah, I mean, most successful is to take outreach literally, because when you have it at the airport, that's sort of in-house, and good luck with people showing up. But when you actually trap people in another setting that they weren't expecting you to be at, that's the best.
We're going to do our best job to trap people at other settings and make sure that they hear our message. And so, thank you for bringing that up. There's going to be a number of other outreach efforts that we're currently in the process of scheduling. I was just trying to touch on the general ones that anyone could attend.
Yeah, I would still look at an open house in Snowmass Village. I mean, for me, it makes more sense to have one in Aspen and one in Snowmass Village than not have the one at the Airport Ops Center, which is hard to find, and you've got to actually get in a car to drive, you can't take a bus. And you reach two major, two, both municipalities.
We will check in with Snowmass to make sure we can get a facility up there. And we can, if that's the board's desire, we can make that happen.
I think so. I'm simply in the process. Okay. All right. So next on our agenda, we've got a proposal for the 2015 Winter X Games. Presenting this is the almost Baltimore Raven football player, NFL long snapper, weighing in at less than 250 pounds at this point. I'm quite certain of that. Mike Kramer.
That's a wonderful introduction. Thanks, Rob.
Probably not the last time in years.
Okay, Mike Kramer, Picking County's planning staff. And next to me is Vanessa Anis, who is a representative for ESPN and X Games. And we're here to talk to you about the 2015 proposal for the X Games. And the ESPN has submitted their special event permit for the X Games are proposed from January 22nd through 25th, 2015. And the standard special events permit application has been submitted, and we have that. And in addition to that, there's actually three topics that are included as a proposal in this application. One is to hold concerts at the Buttermilk venue. So traditionally, in years past, we've seen concerts at Wagner Park within the city of Aspen. This year, ESPN would like to do it at the Buttermilk venue. The second is to hold a fireworks show at the venue at the conclusion of one of the evening concerts, and that would be the Saturday evening concert. And the third, then, is also to serve liquor, I shouldn't say liquor, beer and wine at the concerts. And they would be served to concert goers, and we have Vanessa here to kind of go into detail what that all means and what it looks like. And the reason you're seeing this in a work session, this is really early, we typically don't bring forward the, you know, a work session with the board on special event application until much later in the year, but we thought it was imperative that the board know about these topics and have a discussion with the applicant. And at this point in time, no, no permits have been filed for these, these three topics. And I should go back up and also say that the reason these are significant is because concerts will more than likely exceed the county noise code and require a noise variance. And our environmental health director, Kurt Dahl, is the one who reviews and processes those permits or those variances to the noise code. Because it's got such community impact, and there's so many concerts associated with X Games this year, he would then kick it to the board for review and, and decision. A fireworks show of this magnitude also requires a permit, and that's also in our county code. It's typically a sign-off by the sheriff's office, the local fire district, and then the county manager's office. I think I got all those correct. But we're bringing this to the board so there can be discussion about it, about the appropriateness. And that also requires a variance from the noise code then, too. So two, two variances from the noise code. And then, third, alcohol at the concerts in the form of beer and liquor, that obviously needs a liquor permit, and the liquor board would have to convene and then review that proposal and then make a decision on that. So what Vanessa's looking for is some direction. She basically wants to gauge what the board thinks about these topics. And I think if there's a good feeling towards something like this happening, she would then try to start securing talent for the concerts and applying for the appropriate permits. It's really twofold, too. This also gives the board an opportunity to hear about this and talk about this in a discussion format versus just having these, these variance applications before you and not have any background or preparation for it. So that's, that's the background of the discussion on this. And I'll, I'll quickly go through the, the three topics. The concerts are proposed for the four-day duration of X Games. They're basically all afternoon, early evening concerts, except for Saturday, January 24th, which is the, you know, the big X Games day. And they have an evening show from 9:30 until 11:00. And the concerts will have a maximum capacity, as represented to us, of 6,000 people. It's a ticketed event, and folks would then be able to purchase a ticket and then get scanned to go into the event. It's anticipated that, yes, that these concerts would be loud enough to exceed the county noise code. And we've outlined some parameters of how that gets administered in the memo here from staff. At the conclusion of that, that concert, that evening concert, ESPN would like to have a fireworks show for the last 10 minutes. So if the concert concludes at 11:00 p.m., the last 10 minutes, that would be from 10:50, they'd like to have a fireworks show at that, at that conclusion of that concert. With those concerts, beer and wine would be served. We can let Vanessa go into detail of what that looks like and how it's administered and what fashion is reviewed. And lastly, then, the, I think that was actually all three I just stated. Sorry. But those are the three topics for discussion. And what we're looking for is just direction from the board of county commissioners on how you feel on these topics.
Rachel?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Was alcohol sold at the concerts in Aspen at Wagner Park?
Last year, yes.
They were. And were there problems or issues with that?
I would say no, but I can let Brad and Alex figure out what the county's safety standpoint.
Okay. Well, we'll probably hear from them in a minute or two. I just kind of was wondering what, what had happened in the city. Do you have any idea what the ticket price ranges will be for the concerts?
We have not set a price point yet. We wanted to get your feeling in and kind of initial comfort before securing talent. That will be what determines the price point.
Okay, because I'm just a little concerned that you're going to end up with a certain number of people who say, "It's loud enough. I think I'll just sit out here on the side of the road or over on the golf course or on the Maroon Creek Club and listen. And I don't really need to pay for the ticket and go into the venue and everything like that." And so I think you'd have crowd control in more than one area. And the other question is, will there be events back over on the hill after, like the Thursday and Friday concerts that end at 5:00 and 7:00 p.m.? Or will all the, you know, activities and competitions have ended at that point?
So for the first one regarding the noise bleed, with the ability to really focus and directionalize the sound, you can really specify where the prime audio is based. So yes, there will be some ambient noise, but it won't be obviously as great of an experience. If someone wants to sit there, you know, they're going to sit there. I think the biggest concern would be for us sitting outside the fence line on the venue. I don't see it being on the highway or the golf course. It's going to be more us as a management from egress and access on the venue to, you know, if someone's watching the pipe and they want to stand there, we'd prefer that they buy a ticket, go over and watch the music, knowing that, that's always a possibility. In terms of the other events, yes. So for the afternoon shows, they're kind of in that window where it's normally a lull on the venue. So for Friday, for example, we'd have the music from 5:30 to 7:00, and then after that, we'd have different evening disciplines where the guests can go watch events.
Yeah, I guess what it strikes me is it seems to be contradictory to the message ESPN has always brought in, that you don't have to have alcohol to have a good time. These are athletes performing at their peak. We don't have to have alcohol mixed with that. And so this is kind of saying, you know, "Hey, you can go to a concert, have a few drinks. The underage kids will be there with you, but they won't have the right wristband. And then we'll all hustle back over and watch the events," whether there's adults who maybe overindulge a little and young people who theoretically were supposed to be getting the message, "This is good, clean fun, and we don't need alcohol here and have a great time at the X Games." And so it really seems like a new and contradictory message.
One of the things we're doing to prevent and manage any of the overserving is there'll be a two-drink max per person for the entire duration of the show. So you'll be able to get two beers or two glasses of wine, and that's it. You won't be able to stand at the bar and just belly up and, and have that be the source of issues. We found that that wasn't an issue last year at Wagner Park with the alcohol that was sold there. I don't want to speak on behalf of the sheriffs, but from an ESPN standpoint, Wagner went really well, and we'd like to continue that model. Music is a part of the culture and the lifestyle of action sports, and trying to enhance the event and give the best experience to our guests, we feel that that is the next step that we're taking, to give them a full, broad scope of that lifestyle and that culture.
Thank you. How long do the activities go on each one of these nights?
Music or competitions?
Events as well. How long are people are out there?
Thursday, 9:00 p.m.
9:00?
Friday, we end at 10:30. Saturday at 11:00. And then Sunday at 6:00. And the end times, this doesn't really differ from what we've historically done in years past.
And have there been any noise variances in the past? Because even the events are fairly loud, the announcement of them. I would, I don't know, I mean, it's not much, a concert's not much louder than those people announcing and the cheers, certainly.
In the snowmobiles.
And the cheers, you can't really control, or the snowmobiles. We've never done any noise variance in the past.
We haven't in the past, no. This would be the first noise variance that we would receive for ESPN.
George?
So are the, the evening concert on, on Saturday from 9:00 to 11:30 p.m., is that in lieu of the concert last year at Wagner Park? You're just changing location and venue, and if so, why?
Yes, so this would be, we would not have any concerts in Aspen at Wagner. They would all be on site at Buttermilk. We felt that while Wagner was successful, it was a strain on resources, both for us ESPN and, and again, I don't want to speak for... ESPN and, and again, I don't want to speak for you guys, but for the county as well, where if we can consolidate and have one location where everything is, where we have all of our resources, it better equips both parties to manage them more efficiently.
I guess my only comment or concern would be that having a late concert at Buttermilk and having alcohol served, and then at the end of that concert, you're going to have a mass exodus of people on the highways at night trying to cross the highway to get to the Rapha bus stop, or not that long ago, we had a tragic accident with an inebriated lady walking along Highway 82. Versus when you're in Wagner Park, when the crowd disperses, they don't necessarily have to get in a car to get on the roads, they can walk home, there's buses available. So for me, it's, I'd like to hear from the Sheriff's Department, it's really a safety issue for me as well.
If I can, real quick, as far as the egress goes, our competitive, because it is a ticketed event, we're able to manage that capacity. On Saturday night, all of our competitions end at 9:00 PM, and so we'd have that two-hour lull to egress, general spectators, and then we'd have the concert egress two hours later. And the concert egress would be a smaller egress than we're used to on a Saturday night with the full capacities that we've had when pipe and big air are going back to back, for instance.
Want to weigh in from the Sheriff's Department, or?
Brad, you're sort of the Sheriff's Department. With what Rachel said about the concerts last year, it was quiet, crowds was really well behaved, we had pretty much no problems at the concerts. So that was an issue for us, and we know the Board of County Commissioners is always very concerned about pedestrians out on the highway. ESPN does a lot of work with the Colorado State Patrol to make that intersection as safe as possible, putting up lights, they manage with tractors out of their cars, control of the traffic lights. And we also have patrols just doing laps between shale bluffs and the intercept lot and the venue. So we take it very seriously. In general, we know you guys take it very seriously, so we're very aware of the problem, and try, you know, not to make it a problem.
Steve?
Several questions or comments. One, it would have been helpful to have the schedule of the events of the X Games kind of side by side with the schedule of the concerts, just to make it easier to kind of understand the flow of the people and how.
That is included in the permit that was submitted.
I realize in the packet.
I can get you guys all.
In our packet that we didn't get that. That would have been useful for us. Is this the same number of concerts that you had at Wagner Park in last year?
No, this would be one additional day. Last year at Wagner, we had concerts Friday and Saturday. We had them two days. I'll have to go back and see which day they kind of blend together, but this would be one additional day.
In terms of the sound, when I, I don't go to concerts because it's always way too loud for me, even without my hearing aid in. It's way too loud. If I can't talk to the person next to me and hear them, to me, it's too loud, and typically concerts are just way too loud anyhow. And I attribute it partly to the fact that the sound man is probably deaf from being in so many loud concerts, so they crank the volume up so they can hear it. But I would love to see a concert where it's, you know, you don't go over the sound limit, you turn the volume down and everybody can still hear it. I think they can maybe hear it better, but that, to me, would be the ideal concert, with the volume turned down a little bit, and then maybe we wouldn't have to do the noise variance or the noise leaking out of Buttermilk into the other areas. I think that, I'm okay with, you know, doing the fireworks, but did you have fireworks in Wagner Park before, or is this a new addition this year?
We've never done fireworks. We're exploring the possibility of fireworks. We wanted to get the board's sense of that first. With the tie-in to the concerts, we've never had that opportunity to do something at Buttermilk like this. Again, it would just enhance the experience we're providing. If that is something that the board is adamantly against, you know, that's not a deal breaker for us, it's just something we would like the opportunity to do this year.
And I know sometimes after fireworks, there's, it looks like there was a firefight out there on the snow the next day cleaning up, and just so you're aware of that, you probably would have to have a cleanup crew go clean up whatever debris came down from the fireworks onto the snow.
Once we get to the point of seriously looking into the firework element of the event, that would be one thing that we'd be discussing with the vendor very seriously because we would be having competitions the next day. So we would be very sensitive to making sure our competition courses stay the world-class venues that we expect them to be when they're aired across the world and not be speckled with black ash.
The issue that I would raise with fireworks, and I'm okay with fireworks, is that outside of Aspen, it becomes more rural and more agriculture and wildlife and stock, like horses and that sort of stuff, are where you have the problems. They start jumping fences, they start running off, and in the snow, you could kill someone's horse by, you know, getting spooked by fireworks. In the city of Aspen, you're, you don't have that much around there, and it's, the sound gets quieter as it goes out. So really, some sort of public outreach notice aspect is the way to go with that. I don't know what it is, it's not, you know, just an ad in the paper. I think it's more than that, door-to-door, you know, to some extent, because if someone does have over an Al Creek Road, you know, if someone does have horses or something that have direct line of sight towards, you know, explosions like that, those horses start, they need all their energy, they start running through the snow, and some of them could go because of that, so. Michael and Rachel?
Vanessa, what, tell me what ESPN's vision of this, of these extra events is. Why are they asking for?
Sorry, why do they?
Why are they asking for? What's their vision? What are they doing?
We are creating more of a well-rounded cultural experience, taking.
X Games as a cultural experience?
So in addition to coming and seeing world-class competitions, you're able to then see world-class musical acts and have the full festival environment, creating different ways for guests to experience more than just watching a competition course, whether it's the changes we're trying to implement with bringing Major League Gaming onsite, which is another new element, you know, the, I don't know if you're familiar with it, video game competitions, we implemented that in Austin. Just more diverse ways to reach our fan and interact with them.
So, well, you said it well. So the difficulty I have with it is that, you know, we can be fine with it, but the people who live surrounding Buttermilk, from McLean Flats to Al Creek to West Buttermilk, undergo and experience for four days, that's maybe not part of their culture. Might be X Games culture, but it's not that neighborhood culture. Fireworks, concerts, and alcohol. So I don't know, you know, it'd be hard for me to endorse it without knowing how the neighbors would feel about it. And we had fireworks in Snowmass this summer that resulted in what Rob was talking about, from great distances, and you could hear it in Woody Creek. So it's hard for me to say, it's not going to bother a lot of people who aren't part of the X Games culture, so I don't know how to speak for that, quite frankly. I don't know how to deal with that. I know that, you know, you can drive home on McLean Flats Road without your headlights because of the brightness of the event at X Games. So I just, I'm conflicted about it because I just don't know what the wide impacts of it would be. You know, and I, how do you speak to that? How do you, how do you say, "Yeah, it's okay, go ahead and do it," and then have to answer the neighbors?
Yeah, you know, I lived through the time on the Aspen City Council when they were filming Aspen Extreme, and there was a big fireworks scene at the end, and they had to do it four different shoots because it didn't work. By the very last shoot, I think people were about to hang Bill Effing, and dogs were going crazy and everything like that, and they cut it out of the movie and they never used to it. But what really struck me was that you actually ignored your fireworks without percussions. We tend to think of it, the two go together, but they don't have to have the big booms. They weren't even recording the sound for that movie because they were going to add a soundtrack in later. And so, you know, I don't know if there may be some solutions there, or whether people think that, you know, fireworks aren't fireworks unless you have the big booms going off as well. But, you know, that's something that can be somewhat customized. I am wondering, though, we really would need to hear in from the airport as to whether that starts to get too close to the airport for comfort with the fireworks going up, and, you know, late-night emergency flights might have to come in or something like that. So that's something that would be a totally different person to weigh in on this for us. You know, and this is awkward because this is a great event, the community embraces it in many ways. It does take sacrifice, you know, as some people sacrifice their access in the summer for the pro challenge, and other people ask that, you know, do something else with this event. But it's a city and county-sponsored event in terms of the funding that put in, the help with the lighting and everything else. So I really don't know how the city feels about that potential loss of business of not having the concerts downtown. I mean, that was one of the big things about being downtown, is after it was over, people could disperse to 100 different restaurants or bars, get something late to eat and things like that, and it brought people into Aspen. We know X Games fills every hotel room in the valley, Glenwood Springs up, but I don't know that we see Glenwood Springs and Basalt contributing money out of their general fund to make X Games happen. And if the people are just going to get on the bus and go back home, and I'll have a nightcap when I get to Basalt, or I get to Elgabel, or I get to Glenwood, if that's really the intent of the city hosting the games and sharing our limited resources for events. I can appreciate your desire to continue to kind of upgrade and, you know, look for new excitement and things to make the program even better than it is. But I am also concerned, and I just have to express it now, that, you know, the first year of anything seems to be where we find the problems and have to work out the difficulties. And the first year of concerts in Wagner Park was, you know, somewhat disastrous, you know? People were jumping the fence and pushing fences over, and they couldn't get in, and they, you know, hanging out of bus windows trying to get out. And I would be a little concerned about that here, you know, and maybe if we're doing something here, we should start with one or two concerts and see how they work at the Buttermilk venue, and not all four days, and if, you know, or how quickly can we recalibrate if we're having issues? Because, I mean, it would be part of the special event permitting, but it would be really critically important to know how many people can you process through that quickly, checking IDs and putting wristbands on them? Because if people start getting impatient, the band is starting, and there's a mob still waiting to get through a two- or three-person checkpoint, and you're trying to get 6,000 people into the venue, those are the people who will push the fence down and just push through to the concert. I mean, that, you have to make sure you're not setting up a bad reaction from a crowd. And so, you know, that, you know, how quickly can you process 6,000 people through with a scanned ID and a wristband and not end up with real negatives there? So, you know, I love live music, bringing concerts into town, this is a plus, I don't mean to be negative to that, but, you know, everyone in this room is right, there are negative impacts. I've heard from any number of people that were at Cemetery Lane and that area, Snow Bunny and these things, saying, "I'm just so over the X Games. I'm so over the light at night, the noise of the announcers, the smoke from the snowmobile machines, and, you know, will we do this forever?" is kind of the question that's been asked me. And again, it's a great event, does great things for the town, but there are some folks who may be reaching the end of a tolerance for the disruption. And I can't say one way or the other. I mean, I would not be a flat no on this, but boy, I'd like to see a lot more details before I'm really getting all the way to yes.
Can I reply to some of that?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, regarding the fireworks and specialized without audio, I think that's a great suggestion. I didn't know such a thing existed, so we will definitely look into that. For the airport, yes, we would need to work very closely with them. We haven't had that conversation yet because we wanted to get the board's feeling before unnecessarily talking to other groups. Again, if the fireworks is the sticking point, we have no problem not doing the fireworks. Just wanted to get feelers out there regarding the fireworks show. For the concerts, we have done concerts at Buttermilk. In 2013, we did two days of concerts there. I think what we learned is that it's better to do it with a ticketed capacity. It's easier to manage from a public safety standpoint, which is why we're kind of redesigning the venue and creating a separate space where we can fence that in, have a ticketed access point, and manage the amount of people in that space. For processing guests, yes, they'd be scanned for ticketing, but where they're getting their ID check and where they're getting the alcohol, that would be a separate location than the general entry point for tickets, to prevent that backlog and that backup to quickly process and get everyone in the venue before the show starts.
Okay, thank you. And have you talked to the city about the business aspect of not having the concerts downtown?
We have not discussed as far as the business aspect. I know when we, you know, not had, years past when we haven't had concerts downtown, bars are still packed, you know, there's still lines to get in everywhere. I still see, you know, the remaining thousands of people that come to the X Games that aren't now going to the concerts, still going to the bars, going to have an experience. We've let them know we're not doing concerts at Wagner, but we have not had the specific revenue conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
I would concur with Rachel's assessment about the big concussion booms with the fireworks. That's what really caused the problem with the animals in Old Snowmass this summer, and to me, I would just assume that those not be allowed at any fireworks display because the effect on horses and dogs and people miles away being able to hear it when they don't have any desire to. My question about having, you know, knowing what the other events were going, partly has to do with what the flow of people up and down Highway 82 on Rafta, how many, you know, how many thousand people are going to have to be delivered at a certain time in order to be there at the concert? Or is it going to be people who are already at the X Games and then just walking over to the concert? And if you could have a comment on that, or maybe think about it, sort of the flowchart of where do you anticipate the people will be, and do we have enough transportation capacity to get people there at the right times?
One of the things we saw last year with having the concerts in Wagner is it was a similar guest. You know, it was the spectator that was at Buttermilk that went to the concert and then came back to Buttermilk. So that created a large strain on the transportation. We're envisioning this as actually alleviating that since they're already at Buttermilk, we're not telling them to get on a bus, come into town, get back on the bus, come out to Buttermilk. We're allowing them to stay at one location and not tax Rafta as well as the other transportation providers we bring in to service the event. So that should alleviate additional strain. Yes, there are guests that come specifically for the concert, but a lot of our guests that are there do attend the concert as well. Does that answer?
Yeah, so actually, it should, it sounds like it will alleviate the transportation crunch rather than add to, to a large extent.
That is our hypothesis.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Decision point?
We're not decision, but I'd rather hear general favor, you know, direction.
From an ESPN standpoint, one of the reasons, as Michael mentioned, that we brought this to you so early is we do need to move forward on the concert aspect of things, securing talent, announcing. is we do need to move forward on the concert aspect of things, securing talent, announcing ticket sales and starting to sell those tickets. And while I understand you can't make a decision on that, I would love any unofficial feeling towards us moving in that direction, if you can give that.
I'm in favor of it. I like the transportation flow arguments that you've made in terms of noise variance. I don't think it's that much different than, you know, Sean White doing a Mac Daddy 350 or 1080 or whatever, whatever those things are, and the crowd going wild from that. So I don't think there's that much difference in the noise variance of things out there. So I don't think we've ever judged the noise out there. They've probably broken the variance to some extent with some of those cheers, which is a good thing, I think, in the case of... They're getting the cheers, not that they're breaking the variance.
We're breaking the variance. Just from a decibel level, which is kind of ironic. It's such a low level and we would not exceed, just for your guys' knowledge, the event perimeter will not exceed 80 decibels. If we do, we have a sound manager that will be in touch that will drop the levels back down.
And in terms of the fireworks, I like the idea of quieter fireworks. And I did see a lot of stuff online about shows that have been going in that direction. So, yeah.
Did you get, did you get a variance last year, noise variance from the city when you had the concerts in Wagner Park? Or did you have any, were there any complaints? Was that a concern from the city since you've got residents who live in the downtown area? How did you approach that?
Unfortunately, I personally did not manage the concert aspect of the X Games umbrella. I know that Jennifer, the woman who worked with the city, did go through all the permitting that they had required and I believe a noise variance was part of that, but I can't say for certainty. And I don't believe there were really any complaints that I've been made aware of.
Yeah, I mean, I would just assume that if, being in the center of town, if the noise was an issue for residents and guests who were in town, not for the X Games, but actually to enjoy skiing, that perhaps they would have been affected and would have filed some complaints. I was just curious if, it'd be interesting to know that from the city, if they did hear any complaints. Because I think, as Michael said, I think we should have a mechanism to try to reach out to the neighborhoods to alert them that this is happening and perhaps allow them to provide some feedback. And for me, the really, the one key issue would be that late night concert. You know, I understand that there is some cheers going on when someone does a flip or something. That's a short period of time where you've got a concert, it's going on for an extended period of time. So there's a difference in terms of a continued noise level.
I would compare the noise to one of our snowmobile events. And we have run, for instance, in the past, Snowcross at night, which I would say would be a similar audio bleed to surrounding areas, just for comparison's sake.
Michael.
Yeah, you know, I can understand the impetus of ESPN to make them more attractive from their point of view, from an X Games culture point of view of that. But I am concerned about people who live on McLean Flats, people in Starwood, people all over the place that don't buy into it necessarily and have to suffer the consequences of it. So a non-concussive fireworks show is hugely, I mean, that's, you have to have that. I mean, there's a horse boarding operation right on Isle Creek Road that has 40 horses. And you just can't have that kind of noise. Alcohol, as long as it's controlled, really well controlled, I guess people have to have alcohol, so, okay. So within those limits of unawareness of neighborhood impacts, I guess I'm in favor of it, but...
It's a mag smoking event. What about edibles?
It's a public event, it's not allowed, technically.
Yes, we were, you know, a non-smoking, drug-free event. As far as the management of edibles, I think it's safe to say the whole state is on your territory with that. And I'll take whatever learnings you guys have had from other events on how to identify them.
I think we said it last year, or at least in one of the reviews, of that there needs to be an outreach about that. You know, people, and our sheriff has done a fabulous job with the outreach in general with our clientele coming into the community. But people need to know what the real laws are. And the real laws are private consumption. And I don't know how much of Buttermilk is federal property as well, which is a whole different issue in terms of legality of things on top of the fact that it's not private consumption to be out in the public eating edibles. So there needs to be an outreach and ESPN needs to be part of that outreach.
Yeah, because even doing it at the event or not at the event, you might have people partaking and then, you know, it may be a different year for X Games in general in terms of thinking about your medical backup that you're going to need. Because, you know, with the sheer number of people coming in from out of state who are thinking, I'm going to give that a try while I'm here. And then, you know, so I think, interestingly enough, we're talking about our ambulance district vote for better facilities and they are always, you know, standby medical control for all these events. But, you know, it could be a different world not worrying about the snowmobile flip accident as much as the crowds themselves.
Steve.
I think that marijuana smoking will probably be an issue. From what I heard of the Telluride Bluegrass Festival this year, it was like there was, you know, permeated with the smoke smell. And I'm sure they probably said no smoking allowed too, just to cover their act on it. But then how do you actually go about enforcing that when there's 20,000 people there and you can smell marijuana smoke all over the place? And you can't necessarily identify where it's coming from, but how would you handle that, Sheriff?
Steve, the same way we've handled alcohol in the past is, first of all, with alcohol and marijuana, we have to separate the two somehow. We pat them down in the gate, they have a bottle, we throw it away. If it's that kind of thing in a crowd, we'll do our best to track them down. But as you said, it is kind of just a mystery smell without the location specifically. But it would be diligent, I don't think we should be using marijuana in public. So all we can do is promise to be diligent about it. Same way we are with alcohol. We don't want anything to occur out there. It's going to be a threat to public safety.
But wouldn't ESPN be responsible for the crowd control and adherence to the rules within the venue? I mean, we're not going to have, sheriff's officers take care of the gate, you know, the general thing. But have you policed per se the concerts before or would... Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, because, I mean, it seems like this would be a responsibility for ESPN to have their security people and bouncers or whoever you have in the crowd and controlling the crowd once it's inside the ticketed venue.
It's a combination of both, Rachel. We do a lot of the enforcement, they do the inside security. That's more of the, I don't know how to describe it, policy stuff, control of crowd maneuvering, things like that. You know, I guess I remind you guys that it was a long time ago. We had those concerts at Buttermilk during the summertime. We had big acts, Bob Dylan, Willie Nelson were there. We found a way to manage that property of the crowd. We always find a way to do it. I don't think this is going to be any different. ESPN has always been a good partner of ours and has been really, really good at adhering to that. So I don't see the impact being much different to us. 10,000 people to watch Sean White or 6,000 people to hear Pete Diddy or Whoa, Whoa, Whoa. Focus on 50 Cent was the guy we had last.
Well, we're a little over our time here. It seems like, the board can correct me if I'm wrong, you've got approval to kind of move forward on these things. Obviously, there's some details to be worked out and not approval, direction to move forward. So, you know, look forward to seeing the rest of the proposal and having our staff review it thoroughly.
And I guess I would just add, in terms of direction, similar to what we asked Pro Challenge to do is to develop an outreach program and to be able to follow through, which they did very successfully.
And you probably outreach to what you mean to the neighbors and the community about the impacts?
Yes.
Thank you guys for your time. Thank you for the feedback. We will take it all and kind of adjust based on the concerns I heard and the direction going forward. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just got to do a short break here and come back at 2:45 to wrap up the rest of what we have.
All right, everybody. We are back on here. It's Tuesday, September 16th. This is the Board of County Commissioners picking county work session. And we're moving into our memos of interest. First on our agenda, Marty Ames is here for the senior service space needs study. And while Marty is making her way up, I'll just remind the board that way back in 2011, actually when we adopted the 2012 budget, we had set aside some funds in the manager's budget for what we called strategic initiatives. And it's really around as we had opportunities to maybe forward aspects of our strategic plan that we hadn't anticipated directly in our budget process, that we'd have some funds to go back to. So we already have the funds appropriated. And what we committed to the board was that before using that funding source, we would come back to you and give you an update of what our thinking was and give the board an opportunity to say, yes, go forth, that makes sense to us as far as the use of funds or to pull us back. And so this is actually a request for use of those funds in excess of $24,000. There's about $50,000 left from that original allocation that we've just been carrying forward. So with that kind of intro, I guess Marty, do you want to talk a little bit about the project that you're looking at?
So I guess this is a little larger than a normal request you get for use of the strategic initiatives funding. We would like to commission a professional space needs study for the actual needs of the senior center at this time. As you probably know, the senior center was built 25, four years ago. We occupied it 24 years ago. And we have added a small amount onto it at one time, just a very small amount, like a hundred and forty square feet, something like that. We've pretty much lost our ability to expand any further with the expansion of the hospital around us and just the limitations now of the site and essential fire drives and things like that that they've put in. In addition, a lot of the reasons that we were originally located out there on the hospital campus to be next to the assisted living facility are no longer valid reasons. And we've grown considerably, our population, our senior population has grown considerably. Our needs for space have grown and changed with the years. And the facility is not suiting our needs very well anymore. So one of the, one of the goals that came out of the Aging Well Strategic Planning Initiative for the last year was a desire to look at an appropriately sized and located senior center that could expand in activities and services to meet the needs of the current and growing senior population. For that reason, we feel like there are so few properties that come available. And as they do, we would like to be ready, situated to analyze them, to know if they work for our, for potentially becoming a new senior center and be able to get on it quickly. So that's why we'd like to have a space study. I submitted that to Jody Smith in our facilities department to find out what this would cost. This is what she came back with. So unless there are questions, that's really another...
Questions? Rachel?
I'm very supportive of the request and I'd like to see it go forward. But, you know, in the same way we just talked about facilities earlier today, there can be this ebb and flow. And it's really a bit of a question for me because of the real estate market dynamics of our community. Will we really have a large, quote, free market population of seniors in the future? Or does our population scale need to be more to those who've been able to buy affordable housing and have stayed in the community? But, you know, what we have as a traditional aging senior population in the free market, we're able to buy their places and live here and we're bank managers and store clerks and, you know, business owners. And now we're heading ever more into just a second home ownership situation and all the free market kind of steadily, slowly erodes to that market. Very few residential properties are bought by store managers anymore in town. So I'd like to make sure the study really, at some level, kind of looks at what is this population? Because it's not going to be like a standard city or community where, oh, we know the size of our urban neighborhoods has now doubled, so that means our population of seniors is going to double at a certain point. And I don't know quite how to calculate for that, but I just want to make sure we do account for it somehow.
It's a difficult, you know, it's a moving target. Although, although our predictions have been accurate up to now, at least in the time that I've been here, we knew there would be a growing population of retired workers. And we've seen that come true and they are not leaving. You know, the surveys say they're not going anywhere. As far as the, who owns the homes, you know, I would agree with you that in terms of second homeowners, that would, that certainly is something I wish we could evaluate. But a lot of second homeowners become full-time owners, full-time residents. This is what we see in the truly retired population. And the needs for services and healthy activities and options really span the economic levels.
Oh, sure, and I agree with that. I'm just saying at some level, I'd like to try to look, we don't want to, we don't want to overbuild and we don't want to underbuild.
I understand.
And so gauging that future need, that's a real challenge in this area.
I understand. And any other possibility is sharing the, an actual facility in some ways, certainly for meeting space, you know, community space. Who knows, you know, what the potential might be for teaming up with other needs in our profits or in the community.
Steve.
Are there a couple of things that would be nice? I don't know whether they could be part of this study, but one would be if the senior center did move out of that building, would Witten Terrace be able to use the space effectively? Or would the hospital want to use... in the discussion. Second trend that I've seen is there are a lot of senior citizens who come with their families. Their families are out snowboarding or downhill skiing, and grandma comes to the Snowmass Cross Country Center wanting to go snowshoeing or looking for, they're looking for other activities, because they're not going to go up on the hill and go, you know, break their bones up there. So, if there were, I don't know if the Chamber Resort Association has statistics on that or somebody perhaps has, you know, looked at the tourism numbers of how many elderly people are coming with their families on vacation, and that's something that, you know, really can have an impact on the space needs at the senior center. And it's also, I mean, a wonderful way to use the senior center to provide another amenity for visiting guests.
Steve, we get calls year-round from families who have a mom or dad are both coming to visit and are looking for activities. And, you know, we've always welcomed the visiting older adults in the community to participate, whether they are skiing, you know, with the local senior ski group, or using the senior transportation to get to the music, or, you know, whatever it is, coming and playing cards or my not. So, I would see us exploring that, and particularly if we were able to score an in-town location, I think we would be much more accessible to, you know, the hotel concierge group, you know, who call us a lot now.
So, it looks like you're asking for direction here for this $24,000. It's already been allocated.
It's already appropriated, but we made a commitment to come back to the board before spending any of that money to tell you what we're doing with it and give you an opportunity to weigh in on whether you thought it was appropriate.
Rachel?
Yeah, kind of a broader comment away from this, but are we looking in the 2015 budget to replenish the strategic fund?
Well, we hadn't been before this request, but we may look at putting a few dollars in. We put $100,000 in originally in 2012 and have slowly spent it down on various projects or committed it on various, and it's been useful in that regard. So, we may look at replenishing some of this.
Okay. That's kind of an issue I would like to support. And then, I'd imagine apparently that this study is not going to be in time to answer any questions that people are starting to raise about what about the old art museum site?
We have, I think it's, I think I put that in here. Yes, the committee recently viewed the old art museum property, and the senior council has created a subcommittee. Steve is actually helping with that subcommittee in his role as our liaison, our board liaison. And we will be submitting, it was their decision, to submit a response to the RFQ, which is due in, I think about three weeks.
Okay.
So, that decision was made after the, after viewing and getting it written together, and we're moving forward.
It's not atypical that an RFQ process would be used to narrow a field and then there'd be a more specific proposal process. So, part of the reason we want to do this now versus including it in the 2015 budget or some other time is there's a lot of movement going on right now with looking at facilities and such by the city, by the county. I think there's a lot of questions like, you know, the art museum, what's going to happen there? There may be other facilities that has.
Open up because.
Yeah. And so, it's our thought that we're better off being prepared, because, yeah, I remember my first time we talked about, well, what about the old art museum or something, some other facility for the senior center? What we kept running up against was, well, what is it we really need?
What do we need?
And if we can't answer that question for ourselves right now, it's difficult for us to put ourselves in a competitive or compelling position in these other types of facilities. So, it's our hope, the reason we want to do it now, is that if we do get to the point of a formal process or another opportunity comes up, we are ready to say exactly what it is we need to evaluate those properties immediately and to see if there's an opportunity for us to take advantage of.
That's our hope. The one really fortunate thing, Rachel, about the art museum property is the art museum is there, I think, until next August or September. So, there's a long.
Long window.
Time to really look at this clearly.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Steve?
John, how long would a study, or maybe it's a question for Jody, how long would such a study take and would it be like R&amp;L? Would they be the ones to conduct this study or?
We can certainly look at R&amp;L for that study. If it's appropriate, and it would probably take a couple of months, you know, to get it out to bed or get the contracts in.
Some of that would just depend on how much public input you want to implement through that catalog to go add fairly lengthy components.
And then also, we're not exactly sure what the senior, the committees have, what data has been gathered. So, once we know what we have to work with, then we'll better have a defined scope for what the concierge would do.
I'm in favor of moving forward. Rachel?
Yeah, one last thing, and I'm sorry to keep that. But will we be looking at all about whether there should be mid-valley facility as well as up-valley facility? It's not going to just be all one, because it seems that some of the outreach and the public input would be really valuable to get from the Snowmass Village Town Council and Town of assault. You know, where do they see things going? What do they have planned for their own facilities or things like that? Like you said, shared use sometimes. Thank you.
Board?
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have a funding request from the Healthy Rivers Board.
I'm filling in today. John Ely, and there is an deposition, so. I guess at the August 14th meeting, the, one of the work sessions or maybe a regular meeting, John spoke to you all about how you wanted to see some of these smaller requests coming into the River Board and thought it would be appropriate just through an M&amp;I. So, want to see if this is kind of the format you like and if this works or if you have other direction. And if there was maybe a threshold limit as far as requests coming to you and then you authorizing the funds, like for the $1,000 or something like that, transposing toward happens next week. So, by the time they come to the River Board and then, you know, we get it scheduled with you, sometimes it's a little tight, so.
Thoughts? Sure.
I like this format. It keeps us informed.
Yeah.
My question on this is, where's the account stand right now for Healthy Rivers?
I just thought of that when I sat down. I thought, well, somebody's going to ask me how much we have in the grants, and I think they budgeted a hundred, and we've only spent, with all of these, would be $33,000 this year.
I thought they budgeted 50, but I could be wrong for grants and, you know, leveraging.
Yeah.
It might be that they separated projects from grants.
I think projects and grants, right.
Two different.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
We could come back to this item, George, if you'd like, Lisa, to get that greater context.
Are you looking for the fund balance or what was budgeted?
Well, I was actually, was, I was looking for the fund balance, but I don't need to come back to it. My comment was, I like this format. I like to be able to keep informed, because even though John Ely probably has spoken to us a while ago, I'd forgotten what we had discussed, and so it's good to see this again.
Yeah. The information was put together clearly, and I'm in favor of moving forward with those allocations. Michael?
On the film, Havy film, so we're sponsoring a film or contributing to a film, and did the water board have any, you know, was there going to be a particular point of view on that, western slope point of view or?
Well, I think they had some discussion on that, whether it was going to be maybe at east slope versus west slope, or Denver Water versus, you know, our thoughts over here, political, you know, and Mr. Havy answered all their questions, I think, and they were very satisfied with, that it wouldn't be, you know, political or that it would be more just a history on the water.
So, it's, so the board was satisfied that the point of view of the film was?
Correct. Yeah, they had big concerns and they came back twice, I think, of questions.
Okay.
I can add a little to this discussion. I've met these folks doing some of the Colorado Foundation for Water Education tours. So, they were up in Steamboat when we did the Yampa tour, look at the Yampa River. A, I've seen snippets of other things they've produced. They're very professional, really total theater release quality movies, and they have a great background. And the second is that they're very interested in, you know, as I was saying, in the Yampa, looking at the concerns of people for more diversions, what the impacts have been of diversions. And I spoke with a fellow and said, you know, Picking County is the second most heavily diverted county in the state right now and facing further diversions, and it'd probably be really great for you guys to get a little, you know, some film up here or some discussion of our issues up here. And, you know, they're very interested in that, and I think that's why they've followed up with the Healthy Rivers and Streams Board. I mean, obviously, we don't have script control or creative control, but I thought that it looks like something that really will help educate the folks in Colorado where the front range demand, you know, people just don't realize that's a river coming out of your faucet, you know, that's somebody's river. And I was just last week at the CWCB board meeting to review the draft elements of the plan on Thursday night in Glenwood Springs, and I offered public comment on behalf of QQ, and I only read the article in the Glenwood Post that follow-up to that story where you saw representatives from Colorado Springs and Aurora and some of these communities saying, well, we understand you've got this recreational economy up there, but our backyards are our recreation, and that's why we need irrigated backyards, and we need more water from the west slope to irrigate backyards, because that's our recreation. And it seems like a pretty hollow argument to me, but the greater education of the general public and the water demands and water shortages we face is going to be critical. So, I think it's a great opportunity.
And I think we'll get even like DVDs of films. Andre was excited about that, to show it in the schools maybe, or maybe we can do a film in here or.
Or maybe a premiere at the Wheeler or something like that, as a fundraiser. That'd be great.
Steve?
Oh, I noticed they have put a $350,000 budget for doing the 90-minute documentary. And I'm wondering about what happens if they run over budget, or have they done enough documentaries that they just know they can do, do a good documentary for that amount of money? What's your perception?
Yeah, I think they're pretty far along.
You know, filmmakers, so he's.
Yeah. I think they'll make their budget, and they did have a small presentation at Water Congress in Snowmass in August, just a brief of this coming production and, you know, some of the footage they've captured so far wasn't strung into the story yet, but, you know, I think they'll pull it off.
Yeah, I want, I'd want to, I mean, it looks like they have a really good track record, but Healthy Rivers is putting $5,000 into it. I'd want to be sure that we actually see the film and have it be what we anticipated it to be.
John?
So, to answer George's question, we're sitting on, we're projected to end this year with about $1.7 million in fund balance. Frankly, that's assuming that we collect our sales tax of what we budgeted in 2014 and we spend 100%. If I were to project, we'll be closer to 1.8, because sales tax is up and we never spend fully.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm supportive of the requests, all of them.
What's that?
I say I'm supportive of these being dispersed.
Looks like we're all supportive.
Yeah. So, Rob, just in general, like, I like this system where the Healthy Rivers Board can decide to spend, you know, money up to a certain amount and then just do the informational piece to us.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted like a threshold of, say, 5,000 and under. I could go ahead and even like tell these folks, you know, like the water education. The River Board approved it, but now I told them, I said, now, but it still has to go to the BOCC. So, I wasn't sure if that was still one step we needed to do, or just is this more informational and that the River Boards are?
I think it's informational for us to see it.
Okay.
I mean, unless it's really hard to put something like this together, I think it's good to, for us to know what's going on.
And I guess, just to answer your question, I'd be comfortable with giving the Healthy Rivers Board and your staff to allocate under $5,000, but.
But still do this.
Bring in MOI. If 5,000 and over, I would like to have a discussion.
And 5,000 and over, if it's like a grant request, we still make them score it and?
Yeah, about 5,001 seems to be the threshold, because otherwise you're saying that this request would have had to come back for the board. Yeah. Sorry? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for open discussion? Anybody have open discussion items? What's that?
There's another MOI that I have on holidays. We went over there.
Sorry, we did it.
We skipped you.
Yes. You're right.
I wasn't here.
There will be no holidays in 2014.
We took it all away.
The Grinch came and.
Well, I already put in here, they were approved as presented, so I'm good.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
We had a little.
And you must have done future agendas too?
Five-minute time and did future agendas.
That's, I'm catching on.
Yes?
We had a letter, I'm sure everyone received, from constituent from Snowmass who was concerned about some of the habitat restoration that was going to be happening on Sky Mountain Park, and I didn't respond, but I just want to make sure that, I don't know if staff responded or that we were able to respond and educate this person in terms of what is actually going to be happening on Sky Mountain Park.
I responded through Dale Will and I.
I forwarded to Dale and John.
Copydale Will on it, and then I copied my response to Gerald who did it, and there was a response back from the individual saying something a little contrary. So, I've asked Dale to maybe bring it before us. The issue is, is that they're clear-cutting some small areas, which is the proper habitat restoration, and that it should grow back somewhat within a year, and there's a debate whether or not these are 50, 40- to 50-year-old shrub brushes and whether or not it's the proper thing to be doing.
I think it's appropriate to have Dale respond. I don't think it needs to come back before us, per se.
Yeah.
As I understand it, the master plan and then the various improvements are happening year to year were worked out jointly with our partners in Snowmass as well, you know, on the management plan. So, there's a lot of familiarity with their board. So, I think it's just more, as you said, making sure he's been responded to by staff on our behalf.
His last email to me, Gerald Grayson, was, please have the BOCC look into this more fully. more fully. Fully grown and mature trees, maybe 20 to 50 years old, will only be eight to 12 feet high. Is it proper to be cutting these? So, I will communicate with Dale to talk with Gerald about exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, great.
I'm sending him an email.
Great, anything else? Open discussion?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, I will adjourn the meeting.
Very good.
Thanks.